Community members, and there are no public hearings on today's agenda. So we'll start by just letting our participants know that the city is really striving into a vision co-created by the city staff and community for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. And this vision is really designed to promote free conversation and dialogue, while also recognizing that we want to make sure everyone who's participating feels safe. And we want to ensure that we make space for different viewpoints in our meetings. And we also have a lot of information on our website about what we call our productive atmospheres vision if you, if you're interested in learning more. There are a number of rules of decorum that are found in the Boulder Revised Code, and we have some general guidelines that are advisory in nature to share with all of our meeting participants. We ask that all remarks and testimony raised tonight be related to city business, and we will not allow any participant to make threats or use any other forms of intimidation against any person in the session. Obscenities, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts the meeting or otherwise makes it impossible for us to continue in the moment is prohibited. And we also ask the participants identify themselves by the name they are commonly known by and to display their first and last name before speaking, so we, we know who would like to provide input. We're in the Zoom webinar format, which allows for participants from the public to speak at designated times, but we will not be turning on video for community members because of security concerns. And we ask that you raise your hand if you wish to share comments tonight. And on your screen, you'll see a couple of different ways to do this. At the very bottom of your screen, you'll see a horizontal menu with three clickable items, and you can click on the hand icon, and it'll let us know that you'd like to speak. And if you haven't expanded, then you can also get to the raise hand icon by clicking on, on reactions. So that is everything I wanted to cover. Thank you again, if there are any members from the public with us tonight, and over to you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move ahead with a little bit of an unusual meeting tonight. We have no hearings going on this evening, but we do have a very important informational session in front of us. And so, in order to do that, I just can let you know that this is a joint meeting with the Housing Advisory Board and, and some technical review group that the city has assembled to deal with these issues. But before we move ahead with that, we also have the opportunity for public participation. And so, because there's no hearing tonight, all topics are open, and so I invite any member of the public who wants to address Planning Board on any topic to do so now. And I think Vivian will run that public participation session for us now.
So, thank you, John. And as John mentioned, this would be the, the time for you to let us know that you would like to speak and then share your, any comments. And I do not see any raised hands.
Okay.
Oh, we just had one. Mark Fear, Fear. And you have three minutes. I'm not sure I can pull up the slide quick enough, but I'm keeping my, I'm, I'm timing it, and I, I might interrupt you with the three minutes mark. Please go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I won't be taking three minutes. I wasn't planning on speaking. I'm just here to learn more about the ins and outs of inclusionary zoning. But the only thing I would do is, it's not clear to me if, to increase the amount of affordable housing in terms of what's required of developers from 25% above that, it's not clear to me if it's a planning board who would make that recommendation to City Council, or if this is City Council as a policy issue, they would decide on their own to do that. But that's my only comment is I would really like to encourage the city to have a higher threshold of affordable housing in, in future developments. That's it.
Thanks a lot, Mark. Thanks for coming and sharing your views. Anybody else? Would like to speak at this time? No other hands are raised, John.
Okay, thank you. And Mark, I think, just to respond to your question, I think on that issue, probably Planning Boards likely would make a recommendation to City Council, but it would be a decision to be made by the council dealing with the, with the number that you're inquiring about. So, all right, let's move ahead with our study session, and I'll turn it over to Jay, and I think Jay was likely to invite everybody attending to introduce themselves, but can I take it away? This is your night.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Hello, everybody. I'm Jay Sognitz. I'm with Housing and Human Services. I am the Senior Manager for the Housing side of Housing and Human Services. I oversee the homeownership program as well as the Planning and Policy Group. So joined with me tonight, you'll see Michelle Allen, who is the Inclusionary Housing Manager, as well as Sloan Walbert, who recently joined us from Planning and Development Services, so she should be familiar to a lot of you. So they're really the frontline for inclusionary housing at the city. They are the ones that interact with developers very early on in the project, help them to understand what their inclusionary housing requirement is going to look like and what the process is. So I'm just going to give a very high level overview. It's Sloan, if you could pull up the agenda or the PowerPoint. And then I'm going to turn it over to Michelle and Sloan, because they're, they're the experts and can really take you through it.
Okay.
Yes.
Jay, you might ask everyone attending just to introduce themselves and...
Yep, I have a slide. I just wanted to set the stage a little bit before we get into introductions, but I promise we will do it.
Okay, very good.
So, again, as John mentioned, this is really a study session. Think of this as a sort of a 101, a learning opportunity. It's really not a discussion about policy at this point. If you would like to have a policy debate, I'd be more than happy to go out for a beer with you at some point, but really, this is the opportunity for you to ask questions. How does the program work? We're going to get into some really, the really nitty gritty details. And hopefully stimulate a pretty interesting conversation tonight. So we're going to give you an overview of what the existing regulations are. We're going to talk a little bit about what the upcoming effort looks like, and most importantly, give you the opportunity to ask those questions. So what we're looking for is this group to really help us to make the best recommendations to council possible. So again, this is setting the foundation. Lots more to come in terms of policy alternatives and analysis. So, next line. So the agenda, we're going to do some quick introductions. As I mentioned, a little bit of background, I'm going to talk about the high level of affordable housing, history of the program. Sloan and Michelle are going to get into the nitty gritty. And as I mentioned, the next steps, we are going to ask you to hold your questions to the end. Otherwise, we're a little bit concerned we might not get through it, but if there's a burning question, or if John and Sarah, if you feel like there's an appropriate place to stop and ask questions, we are open to that. Just felt it might be a little bit easier in that a lot of questions might get answered if we just continue with the conversation. So, a little bit of, before we introduce everybody, so there, I think everybody's familiar with Planning Board. It's a quasi judicial board. You guys make decisions. You also make recommendations to council. Housing Advisory Board recently formed, well, relatively recently, about five or six years ago. They're purely advisory and meant to help council address, or give them advice on how to address our housing challenges. The group that you might not be familiar with is the Affordable Housing Technical Review Group. So that's a seven-member group. They're appointed by the city manager. And their primary role is to provide recommendations to the city manager on how we award affordable housing funds. So they're a little bit different as well, so they, there is a requirement for professional experience related to the affordable housing industry. There's one commercial lender with experience financing residential projects, a Realtor or other real estate professional, and then two as well at large. So I, now's the time for introductions, so I'm going to ask everybody to just very briefly give their name, which board they're with, and just state what your profession is, sort of what expertise do you bring to the conversation? So, John, you want to start? You're at the top left for me.
Okay, thank you. I'm John Gerstle, Planning Board Chair, and I have a professional background as an environmental and water resources engineer.
Thanks. Sarah?
Sarah Silver, Planning Board, and I'm the Executive Director of a, of a private family foundation that focuses on social inclusion and cohesion.
Philip?
I'm Philip Ogren. I'm on the Housing Advisory Board. I'm a computer scientist. I work in a machine learning research lab.
Angela?
Angela McCormick. I'm with the TRG, and I am 36 years as a real estate professional in commercial finance, construction, development, and brokerage.
Laura?
Hi, I'm Laura Kaplan. This is my first year on the Planning Board, appointed last April. My professional background is I am a public policy facilitator, working mostly in California, actually, water, flood, habitat restoration, forestry, those kinds of issues.
Okay. Mr. Boone?
Yeah, George Boone, Planning Board. My professional background is in real estate development, hospitality entitlements, and I'm a, a private developer as well, commercial property.
Michael?
Hi, Michael Luchacy. I'm Chair of the Housing Advisory Board. I have a background in journalism and spent the last 16 years as Executive Director of Urban Land Institute Colorado. I retired last year, and I still do some consulting. Good to see you, buddy.
ML?
Good evening. Thank you, Jay. My name is ML Robles, and I'm on the Planning Board, also a newbie, been on here less than a year. My profession is I'm an architect here in Boulder. I specialize in small houses and ADUs, and I am also a researcher.
Mark?
Hi, Mark McIntyre. I'm along with Laura and ML, a freshman Planning Board member. I had owned a technical engineering sales company for 32 years. I also own some commercial real estate, and I'm considering myself an amateur at most everything.
Danny, are you well enough to speak?
I am. Hi, Dan Tidoro. I'm a real estate and land use development attorney. I've been on the Housing Board for, wow, it's about five years now, so almost five years. Nice to see everybody. You don't want to see me.
Well, thanks, everybody. I think I got everybody. I didn't miss anyone, did I? No. All right, so we'll keep going. Next slide. So there are two council priorities related to affordable housing that came out of the 2022 session. First one is what we're talking about tonight. And really, the, the direction from council was to revise the IH code just to focus specifically on increasing middle-income units, and we'll talk more about that. The other priority specifically for Housing and Human Services was to launch the Middle Income Down Payment Assistance Pilot. I'm not going to talk about that, but if you're interested, it is going to go to council on March 2nd. So just some background that's super obvious to this group, so you can see the bottom line is area median income. That's been relatively flat since 2010. You can see sales prices for attached homes is the orange line, blue line. We finally broke the $1 million sales price barrier for single-family homes back in 2020. I'm hoping that didn't quite, I won't get that flattened out a little bit this year. I'll have the data in a couple of weeks. But I think you all know what the problem is. And next slide. And it's something that the city of Boulder has recognized, that, you know, basically housing prices have been outpacing income growth. And as early as 1966, we formed the, or, or we formulated the Housing Authority, and then all through the years, there have been different improvements. I'm not going to go through this whole thing. There is a great, this graphic is on the website, and there's detail about each of these that if you're interested, I would encourage you to take a look. The main thing I wanted to point out was that inclusionary housing was adopted in 2000, and there have been two major updates over the years. So, just like any program, it requires refinements, adjustments over time as market conditions change, or as, you know, policy priorities change. So we're going to do that again this year. But it's important to keep in mind, next slide, that, you know, the, the city of Boulder's program is extremely mature, and I would say highly successful. So you can see that we have 3,815 units that are permanently deed-restricted homes. So we're at about 8.1%. Those numbers, I think we're going to get up to 8.3, maybe even 8.4 with the new 2022 numbers. So we're, we're well more than halfway to achieving our 15% goal. And it's also important to note that, you know, a lot of communities, particularly immediately adjacent, so Lafayette, Longmont, Louisville, they used to provide our affordable housing, and now they're finding the same challenges we do and are starting to adopt inclusionary housing programs, and they're really looking to Boulder in terms of providing guidance on how to address their problems as well. This graphic with the house in the middle, I think, is worth explaining. The, so this basically is a time period between 2015 and, I'm sorry, 2016 and 2020. So it shows out of every 100 units that were built new, this is new construction, 81 of those were market rate, and 19 were permanently affordable. So it's new construction. And that's largely through IH, and we'll talk about that more. But the, the orange line is what's really important for, and the only way that we're going to be able to achieve our goals, we're not going to be able to build our way out of it, is that those 17 units, we're also able to preserve, so basically acquire existing housing that was market rate and deed restricting it, making it permanently affordable in perpetuity. So, next slide. Another piece that I wanted to talk about, just as context, there was a pretty significant shift, and this shows pretty dramatically that the, the system, as we set it up back in 2000, served us well. At that time, we were getting quite a bit of ownership. There was fairly decent mix of ownership and rental, and we were getting onsite ownership rentals or ownership units, too, I think. But that shifted around 2012, was probably the most pronounced change. And it was a, a number of different factors. There was the Great Recession, of course, the housing bubble burst. There was changes in, in financing as a result of that. There's also construction defects laws that were passed, so it's a variety of different factors. But what we're seeing is that today, we're seeing primarily rentals and very few ownership. And, and when we want, when we're talking about middle income and the need for middle income, it's really about ownership, right? Because middle-income households, they can typically afford to rent in Boulder. It's when they make that transition from rental to ownership that becomes challenging. And it's also really, the other thing to keep in mind is there is no state or federal funding for ownership, particularly about when we get above that 60% AMI. So we have to rely on those local funding sources to achieve those policy outcomes. All right, next slide. I'm almost done, just two more slides to try to set some context. So, we're going to talk a lot about funding and how important that local funding is. So it's really crucial for us to achieve our affordable housing goals. So those local housing funds we get, the cash and lieu, the commercial linkage fees, the local excise taxes, property taxes that we, that you all pay, all of that gets leveraged with outside sources, two, three, sometimes four dollars in state and federal funding. So that allows us to produce more housing, so that that cash actually produces more housing than if we were to require those sites to be built, those units to be built onsite. So that's a really important piece to keep in mind. It also has lots of other benefits, so we can create a range of household types, so serving different incomes. So primarily through our Housing Authority, Boulder Housing Partners, we can serve people of much lower AMI, so 50, 30% AMI, really providing housing for people at different income areas. It also helps us to get preservation, like I mentioned, those extra 17 units. And we can use that to purchase that existing housing deed restricted, and we're not in a really disrupting the, the natural balance of things. We don't get a lot of opposition to acquisition like we do with the construction of new affordable housing in the community. But most importantly, this, this map to the right, I would argue, you know, one of the main benefits is that we get greater distribution of housing, so that we are able to preserve units. Otherwise, this map would look very different. I think there would be fewer dots, and those dots would be concentrated in parts of the city where we're seeing most growth. So you, we, so to me, the, one of the main benefits is that it provides a more diverse, geographically diverse affordable housing. Next slide, the last one, I promise. So despite all our successes, there are still challenges. So that market emphasis on rentals, I talked about, the challenges of trying to get middle-income homeownership units. You know, the, the fact that the housing market has been slow to recover. So, you know, it used to be just Boulder and mountain towns in the, in the coast that with housing challenges. Now it's a national conversation. Every community is being challenged with affordability. And then on top of that, we have high inflation as well as higher interest rates that are making our jobs even more difficult. So we have lots of challenges ahead, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sloan.
Okay, thanks, Jay. So I'm going to just sort of cover some high-level, the affordable housing tools used by the city, and then some of the specific IH requirements. And then I'll hand it to Michelle to sort of get into the nitty gritty. So, just to sort of set the stage, most people probably know this, but some of the commonly used terms and acronyms specific to inclusionary housing. First one being, when you typically hear the term affordable housing, it's actually referring to what we would call attainable housing, which is housing that's affordable to individuals and families earning close to the area median income and costing no more than 30% of their income. The city doesn't track this type of market rate housing in the city. And so in terms of the program, permanently affordable housing is deed restricted, and it's affordable in perpetuity. And then area median income, also known as AMI, it's a federal calculation based on census data for Boulder. So because it's a median, half of households make less than that 100% AMI, and half make more. So the income limits for both rental and homeownership are established at different percentages of that AMI. And to qualify for the rentals or homes, the household income needs to be at or below that designated AMI. And so in terms of how we define that, low-income households range from 0% to 60% of area median income. And moderate would be 61% to 80, and then what we call middle income is 81% to 120. And then on the screen, it kind of shows you to what that exact calculation would be. For this year, it'd be $81,000 for a household of three, $63,000 for a household of one. So it's important to note that inclusionary housing is just one of the programs like Jay was describing that the city uses to provide affordable housing. The three regulatory tools that generate affordable housing are annexation, the IH program, and then funding. So Planning Board's probably pretty familiar with it, but in terms of annexations, a proposed annexation needs to demonstrate community benefit consistent with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, and that's intended to offset potential impacts of development. So for residential development, the emphasis is given to the provision of permanently affordable housing. That's typically 40 to 50% of new housing must be affordable. So historically, annexations have provided sort of the greatest opportunity to create affordable ownership opportunities. But as the city sort of infills and we come up against the growth boundary, that sort of appears to be decreasing. And then in terms of funding, as Jay described, we do receive funds for property taxes and those commercial linkage fees. This graphic just shows that since 2015, the city has received over $85 million. And that includes federal funds like CBPG funds, and then that amount of funding for cash and lieu and IH kind of varies year to year based on development activity in the city. And this graphic kind of shows the outcome of the three tools since 2000, and it also sort of reflects that decrease in ownership projects, sort of starting in 2013. You can see that big dip right there. All right. And so just to get into inclusionary housing, generally speaking, inclusionary housing, it's also referred to as inclusionary zoning, is really a policy or set of policy that requires developers to set aside a percentage of new units to lower moderate-income households at below market prices. For the city, these are codified in the Land Use Code, and there's also a set of administrative regulations on how those are actually implemented. And it's a mandatory requirement, and the intent is really to increase the supply of affordable homes, and also, where possible, integrate into neighborhoods racially, socioeconomically. Really taps into the economic gains from rising real estate values to create those affordable housing opportunities. So, the IH program requires that all developments, regardless of size, contribute a percentage of new housing as permanently affordable. So for developments with more than five units, the IH program requires 25% to be, of new units to be permanently affordable. Smaller developments, including single-family homes, have that 20% requirement. And this requirement can be satisfied by one or more of the, the options shown on the screen. They can provide the affordable units onsite, integrated into the development. That's what was originally intended through the program. They can provide the affordable units offsite on a different parcel of land. They can make a cash and lieu contribution, or dedicate vacant land for future affordable housing development. I'd also just want to point out, there are some differences between the requirements for homeownership and rental projects. Michelle's going to get into sort of the details on that in a minute. And it's also just important to note, because the inclusionary housing requirements only occur in new residential development, the location, type, size, and other details are really dictated by developers. We can't influence the tenure of the development, whether it's ownership or rental, the location, or any of the other characteristics through the development process, basically. Also, just important to note that affordable housing has to be comparable in quality design and just general appearance as the market units that are creating the IH obligation. There's some specific livability standards to ensure that permanently affordable housing is functional, meets the needs of a range of types and sizes of households, meets code standards, and also has high-quality building design and construction. And that's typically reviewed through the discretionary planning review process, but can also be done through sort of an offsite review to make sure that it meets the requirements. Also, just want to note that the required affordable units for development are of the same types and bedrooms in the same proportion. Also, just want to note that the required affordable units for development are of the same types and bedrooms in the same proportion as the market rate dwelling units. So that would be the same tenure, ownership versus rental. And then, just for your reference, the unit size requirements for each bedroom type are shown on the screen. And then the average unit size is used to determine what's generated through the IH requirements. And then the cash and lieu amount is also based on the size. Michelle's gonna get into detail how that is calculated in a minute. And so in terms of outcomes, as you described, for the first ten years of the program, many developments provided those units onsite. But since the markets changed and there's additional complications, most projects now contribute cash and lieu and you can see here, that's as of the end of last year, that's sixty-three point eight million dollars. It's also important to note that the ability of a developer to provide it onsite is really related to the size of the project. That's because if you have a larger project, you may be able to use light tech funds to help some federal funding that helps you fund the project. So there has been a couple onsite affordable projects in the last couple years, which is sort of a new new development. I think Michelle's gonna talk a little bit about the change. Well, but really, we talk about cash and lieu as the workhorse of the program. It's important to note that a developer can always opt for cash and lieu even when they're pulling a building permit. So sometimes they really can't give us an answer on how they're gonna meet the inclusionary housing requirements until they're in the building permit process. But as Jay described, IH is really a key tool in generating the necessary funding to produce that broader range of homeownership opportunities and rental opportunities. And really, the reason for that is because cash and lieu contributions can be leveraged against other state and federal funding to provide additional units. And then, so for two thousand twenty-two, that amounted to about ten million dollars. And cash and lieu, if you saw in that earlier graphic, is about half of all the housing funding sources for the city. So really, the bottom line is that we're seeing very few affordable units produced directly through the IH program. But as for all the reasons Jay described, it's cash and lieu is still a really good option to satisfy the IH. All the options that are given can still provide very, very much needed affordable housing in the community. So I'm gonna hand it over to Michelle now, and she can jump into some of the details.
Yeah, hello. So, um, actually, can we go back one slide? I I just wanted to point out that up until recently, and I'll go into more detail about it, rental projects really couldn't do affordable units onsite without going into a public-private partnership, which they were very reluctant, well, none of them chose to do. And most development was rental. And so that kind of skewed the whole program over to new development paying cash and lieu. The few for-sale projects we had, by and large, also paid cash and lieu, but since most projects were rental, the outcome was sort of a foregone conclusion. So we can move forward. That's changed, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So I wanted to talk about two, two major issues that I think are frustrating for for Planning Board and for council. And that is the timing and why we, why the program was set up to allow developers to choose their option later in the process than most people would like. And the other thing is about why we allow cash and lieu as an option at all, actually. So the first one, timing. The program, as you, as I think most of you know, allows a developer to change their option or decide on their option up until the time of building permit submission. And this is basically because the way the process works is that developers get get entitlements. So that's their site review approval. And then they go out and they get all of their partners, their banking partners, their equity partners, their insurance partners, and all those folks who all have opinions about this, about whether they should put affordable, can put affordable units in the project. And so they don't know until after they have the entitlements, and they're actually in the in the construction environment, they understand, better understand the cost of the project, what the project is gonna look like. And you know, there's a lot of, a lot of costs that can come up through a site review, review. Their density can change, their road configuration can change, they could have flood mitigation issues. Costs, big costs, and construction costs aren't yet what they're, the environment that they're gonna be working in. So they need to get the entitlements first, and then they go out and they determine what they're, now they know what their project looks like. They get all their partners in, their equity partners and everybody else. And then they can make an informed decision as to whether they really can put affordable units on the project. So essentially, if if they were to try to commit to something at concept plan and site review, they may have all the best intentions of the world, but but they may not be able to do it. They they really don't know until they've got their entitlements and they've basically got a project that they're working with. So bottom line is that the decision makers need to be comfortable with the proposed development with or without affordable units onsite. Compliance with inclusionary housing is guaranteed. They're going to comply. They will not get a building permit without complying. But we do, but but we do need to give them options so that if onsite affordable units aren't viable, they, their project can move forward with a a cash option. So someone asked me at one point, what if they do promise something at concept plan or site review? Well, you know, they should be questioned because they probably are saying they might be able to do it. They'll try to do it. They may be able to do it. But it's unlikely that they can guarantee that they'll do it. So next slide. So related to that is is the whole cash and lieu option. Why do we allow it? Number one is because it's a great option. It's a great a community benefit for the for the community. It provides significant benefit, as we've talked about, both Jay and Sloane talked about. We can leverage that cash and lieu to get more affordable units, and we leverage it with funds that come outside the city, state and federal funds. That's money coming into Boulder. That's a great benefit to the community. We can get a wider variety of housing and respond to whatever the council priorities are at a given time, whether it's transitional, permanently supportive, senior, middle income, so we can be very responsive. And that the, that money is critical for maintaining the existing affordable housing stock. And it ensures that option, ensures that a development can move forward when affordable units simply aren't viable. And they cannot be viable because, as I mentioned, the the partners that they get after entitlements may, you know, first of all, they may not have a viable project from a, from the standpoint of a return on investment. They 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 need a return on investment in order to attract an equity partner. Without return on investment, they have no financing. And another big complication is that there's a state rent control statute. It was amended a couple years ago. And it's making it easier for private developers to construct, own, and operate affordable rentals in a rental project. However, that state statute requires that the city offer a developer options other than just deed restricted rentals. And so the most typical option is cash and lieu. So hopefully that answers a few questions, probably brings up a whole lot more. We could talk about it later. So next slide. So I wanted to just put this in so people can see sort of the stack of how the city's affordable strategies serve everything from zero income all the way up to middle income. So we call zero to forty percent AMI, very low income. It's also a HUD term. And those affordable units are, they're either rental units, or they're beds, or they're permanently supportive units. Those come about because of local funding, which is primarily cash and lieu, and then these other leveraged funds from outside the city. And generally, most of them are done by BHP, but we have other partners that do, do, do that type of housing as well. Then you kind of get into the the low income, which is fifty to sixty percent AMI. And again, that those come about because of funded projects and are primarily constructed, owned, and operated by the city's housing authority, Boulder Housing Partners. They're gonna, all of these are gonna be rentals. And then you get to the inclusionary housing level. There's overlap. So a lot of funding for BHP rental projects is at the sixty percent AMI level. And most IH rental units are also gonna be at the sixty percent rental level. So we're sort of a little heavy on sixty percent rental units in our requirements right now. It's something we're gonna be looking at. IH, the rental AMI is sixty, and then there's a small amount that's eighty percent. But most developers, rental developers can't use that eighty percent because low-income housing tax credits don't allow those. It's gotta be sixty percent or below. Then in the IH world, we move into the for-sale product. The most IH for-sale units are gonna be priced at the HUD low-income limit, which is determined annually by a HUD. And right now, it's at seventy-one percent. So you can kind of see, we're going forty, fifty, sixty, seventy. And so that's eighty percent of IH units are at that HUD low-income limit. Only five percent of the, or, you know, twenty percent, depending how you do the math, but of the twenty-five percent, twenty percent are low-income priced, and five percent are this range of middle-income pricing, which is between eighty and a hundred percent. And so the the low mod and the middle income IH units would be for-sale units. So next slide. So we're gonna run through really quickly, what does this mean? So sixty percent AMI, which I said we're a little heavy on, that's sort of our rental metric. It's always been in the program and in our funding world. That's sort of a go-to AMI. Considered sort of a workforce income. And a one-person household would earn fifty-two thousand, six-eighty. A three-person household would earn sixty, no more than sixty-seven, seven-forty. And that's then the rents are set to be affordable to those incomes. Next slide. Low mod income is the, is what most IH for-sale units would be priced at. It's seventy-one percent AMI. And that's a one-person household earning sixty-three thousand and a three-person household earning eighty-one thousand. They can earn a little bit more because we want to have a range of buyers. These are for-sale product. So there is a range around those incomes where people can qualify to buy these units. Next slide. And then we have our five percent middle income tier in IH program. Those prices are gonna be set to be affordable to people earning between eighty and a hundred for twenty percent AMI. Again, it's a for-sale product. It's a range. There are actually three tiers in there, but I didn't want to get into that detail. So one-person household can earn between seventy and a hundred and five thousand. So that's the eighty and the one-twenty, the two bookends. And a three-person household between ninety and one-thirty-five, again, the two bookends, and people in between can qualify to buy those units. But we, we, right now, that, this is the, the golden goose that we're chasing after. We would really like to get more of these middle-income for-sale homes. We, by we, I mean council. And so that's the, the goal of the update is to look at how we can get more middle-income for-sale units, affordable units. Okay, next. So there has also been raised a question. It kind of comes and goes. Which is, does it make sense to do affordable homeownership when it's a limited appreciation product? People don't understand that product very well. For many, it's the only opportunity to own a home in the city of Boulder. They might be able to own something out in Frederick, but they're probably not gonna afford to own something in Boulder. Limited appreciation ensures the home will remain affordable over time. But but some appreciation is allowed every year, and its average is about two percent. And over the time of of, you know, reasonable amount of time for owning a affordable home, the affordable house, the household that owns the home will build enough equity possibly for down payment for a market home. And and there are, there are big benefits to affordable homeownership for lower-income people, and probably the biggest one is stability. It stabilizes families. It gives them a fixed housing cost that they can rely on. There's no rent increases, and they can't, their lease can't be canceled, you know, at the most inconvenient time for them. And that means the kids have a lot of stability. So it's great for children, and the kids stay in the same school over the course of of the years that they own the home. So that's really beneficial to the community. There is a, this sort of you know, pride of ownership is huge. It's huge to helping a lower-income household really understand that there, there, there's help out there. There's people out there that will help them move up through, you know, through the income ladder and through the housing ladder. And you know, there's been studies that have shown that people participate where they live, not where they work, but where they live. And so when people own homes in Boulder, lower-income people, they're much more likely to participate in the public discourse. So there are a lot of benefits to homeownership, but it's up to council and and planning board's advice to to decide whether that that they outweigh the, you know, the the challenge in getting ownership units. Next. So these are some metrics around the program. So for-sale units come from for-sale projects. If somebody has a for-sale project, IH says twenty-five percent of those units have to be permanently affordable. Again, they do have options, but if they would like to put those units onsite, they do need to be for-sale as well. And so if they're gonna put any or all of them onsite, eighty percent will be priced at that low moderate income level. And you guys have the printout from this presentation to study. So when we come back, you know, with our option suggestions and recommendations, you know, you can, this will be a good, a good thing to keep in your back pocket with all of these income levels and what, what do they mean? But eighty percent priced for low moderate income, which is currently around seventy percent of the AMI, and twenties percent priced for middle income, which is between eighty and one-twenty is the range. These products, of course, are gonna be condos. They're for sale. They're occasionally single-family homes or townhomes, but by and large, they're gonna be condos. They're sold to individual owners, which means that they are just scattered, you know, the 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 IH code says they have to be scattered throughout a project. It's not a problem because they're just sold off. So they're integrated throughout the project. They have the same quality construction because they're all constructed, the for-sale and the market at the same time. They're mixed in a building. And for the same reason, all the amenities are shared. The whole project will be turned over to an HOA once it's all sold, and the amenities are shared. You know, the biggest problem we have with for-sale affordable units is that the HOA fees can can be high. And that's a challenge, not for, only for our program, but for IH programs all throughout the country. Next slide. So this is a big piece of what we're gonna be looking at in the, in the update. Because the council direction was to look at how we incentivize onsite for-sale, particularly middle-income units. And so we have these three incentives. I just talked about this pricing split. Just as a reminder, so you can refer to that as I'm talking about this. So right when we, when we updated the program in two thousand eighteen, that's when we added the middle income tier. We went from a twenty percent requirement to twenty-five, and that additional five percent was middle-income units, affordable units. We knew at the time it will be challenging for developers to provide those units onsite. And so from the get-go, in that update, we built in incentives to try to encourage and use a carrot to get some onsite for-sale units. So the three that we have are small developments of less than twenty units. All permanently affordable units can have middle-income prices. You don't have that eighty-twenty split. Um, so the three that we have are small developments of less than twenty units, all permanently affordable units can have middle income prices, you don't have that eighty twenty split. Um, if they put half of the requirement onsite, they get a reduction in cash and loo on the other half that they owe. So when somebody does some onsite, usually the other, what what they don't do onsite, they pay cash and loo for that. And so there's a reduction in cash and loo if they put half onsite. Um, then if they were put seventy five percent or more onsite, then the pricing overall can go to a fifty fifty mix of low mod or middle income. So when pricing is is shifted to middle income pricing, of course, that's more revenues for the project. Um, should make it look more attractive to put those units onsite. So we're gonna be looking at these because they haven't been, um. You know, they haven't been uh, very effective, actually. For encour- encouraging developers to put middle income units onsite. Um, so this is a big piece of what we, um, of what council wants us to look at and where we'll bring back options. The next slide, please. So I wanna talk about rent control, cuz I'm.
I'm so sorry, Michelle, just. Uh, that that's last um, slide was actually fairly a little confusing.
Yeah, sure, go back on.
Are these incentives what we're discussing, or are these the incentives that exist? I'm sorry.
They exist, we built them in in twenty eighteen.
Okay.
And they, I I would, I would say they were not robust enough to really uh, make things happen. Which is a bit disappointing, but we, you know, we continue. So, and now I'm gonna go to the rental side of the program, um, and so many people are um. Familiar with the fact that there is a state statute that um, for a long time prohibited rent control in Colorado. Um, and the, we could still. Um, implement inclusionary housing on rental projects, but they had to do it through a public private partnership. Um, and that wasn't attractive and wasn't of interest really to anybody for a lot of um, a lot of reasons, and it didn't result in any onsite rental units. Um, which was not honestly very surprising. Um, and so all rental development up to a couple of years ago paid cash and loo. Uh, in twenty twenty one, the state law was amended. Um, so that we didn't need a pro- public private partnership anymore, and a private developer could own and construct, own and operate. Affordable rentals in their project, since then, we've had two large projects that have done that. Weathervein and Spine Road, both, Weathervein's under construction and Spine Road is at the end of its entitlement project. Um, process. So, um. But, the state law was amended with requirements, uh, and we, of course, are subject to the state law. That at least one other option has to be available to a rental development, um, in, you know, and another option besides providing rent controlled units. And um, the local government has to enact laws to increase density and availability of housing. There's a whole list of things that local government um, could do to meet that second requirement, and and Boulder has done a number of them. Next slide. So rental, and this is set up a little bit like that for sale prod um, slide. So if a rental project comes in. And we assess it for IH, and they say we wanna put some units on site, they can be rental units. They could also be homeownership, it doesn't go the other way around, home no, homeownership projects cannot do rental units unless they wanna do. Um, something like a lot more of them, which they don't. Um, like a two to one or something, it's a le- a less desirable product. But rentals could go to a more desirable product, a rental project that wanted to to do homeownership, and we did have one that did that. Um, can. So, um. So a rental project comes in, they wanna put units on site, let's say a a weather vein type project. Eighty percent of the unit of the required affordable units, which is twenty five percent, are going to be um. Have rents affordable to households earning no more than sixty percent of the AMI. Twenty percent for eighty percent, although. Um, neither of those projects utilize the eighty percent tier because. They did utilize low income housing tax credits to build those rental units, and those don't allow. Um, well, one of them utilized tax credits, the other one did not. Um, but tax credits don't allow eighty percent rents to be utilized, so there's a mismatch here, we'll be looking at that in in the update. Um, there are no incentives, because when we did this, um. Honestly, the state statute kind of uh, controlled everything and made it virtually um. Not possible for rental developers to put rentals onsite. Again, that landscape has changed, we're excited about it, and we do expect more rentals to be provided onsite in the future. So, the rentals are of course gonna be a pro- apartments, which are different, they're not condoed out individually, they're not individual legal. Things um, at the get go. Um, so they can be provided in two different ways according to the code right now, because we weren't sure which way would be the most. Um, utilized or the the best approach, so we kind of left the code um, in twenty eighteen. Where they could do the rental units either integrated with the market units. Similar to condos. Or they could subdivide off a part of their project and do um, create separate lots, and then there's essentially a separate project. Under different ownership, because it's going to be a light tech partnership ownership, it's a different entity. So, um, in the integrated. Scenario, of course, the share amen- shared amenities are sort of a given, because the units are. In uh, interspersed with market units in the buildings, and everybody shares the amenities, it's sort of uh, just a given. Um, they're they're under. The construction quality will be the same as the market unit, because they're gonna use all the same subs, and they're gonna use all the same materials and do, the construction is the same for the market and the affordable units. And it'll be under the same owner management, typically, although they could have a different management company that um, manage their affordable rental units in this scenario. In the um. In the separate scenario. Shared amenities are complicated, but they are required by the code, and we do enforce that, they've gotta share the amenities. It's not as easy when you essentially have two different projects that are funded differently. Um, but, and again, we have only one example of each of these so far, so it's not like we've got a deep um, e- experience in this. Um, the quality is not insure insured, um. Because it's a separate project, so it's not the same subs, it's not the same building materials, it's, you know. So we do have to keep a close eye on the quality of the construction and the materials, and they're gonna be separately owned and managed than the market project. So, move on, please. So to give you an idea of what rents look like. So the blue portion of this um, table. Has fifty, sixty and eighty percent rents, the sixty and eighty percent rents are what the code. Re- um, requires now. If somebody comes in and they wanna do onsite affordable rentals, these are the rents uh, for this year, they're adjusted annually. Um, they are adjusted based on HUD data, um, and um. You know, everybody uses the same numbers, essentially, we don't set these reps there, but they do reflect the, what a household at. Um, sixty percent or eighty percent AMI can afford. But notice they go by bedroom, they do not go by size, that's sort of an industry standard. Um, and then I put the fifty percents in, because we are thinking that it might be good to create a a broader, um. To in- increase the range of who could, of the rent, of the rentals that can be created through inclusionary housing, cuz we do expect. Expect more uh, onsite rentals in the future because of the change to the state statute, and perhaps we wanna consider adding a fifty percent tier. Um, eighty percents will keep, although they're not gonna be able to be used by most people. And then I went out, this was very um. Very off the cuff, I looked at three recent developments, so this is new construction. Um. And um, I basically just went on their websites and look at what they're, what their marketing says that they're charging these days. And these were the the rents that they had, so it's a a bit, um, you know, it's quite interesting. Um, especially the zero bedroom, which tend to be very small, of four hundred and fifty to five hundred square feet. And they're by and large charging twenty two hundred dollars for those. Um, and then the one bedrooms, again, there's a range for all of these, because they've got some, it, you know. So I kind of, I kind of did an averaging things, sort of the average rent, so they're, they have units that are higher and some that are lower. But as you can see, that they're getting up there, twenty eight, twenty seven, that's almost twenty nine. The two bedrooms are three thousand to five thousand, I'm on. So, kinda crazy. The rents that are being charged these days, so affordable rentals are still needed, much needed in Boulder. So, next slide, please. So, um, I actually did this as an exercise internal to staff, and everybody thought it was so interesting, we all thought that you might find it interesting as well. Um, so, there's a lot of um, confusion around why things play out slightly differently in different projects. And so I wanted to sort of um, go, you share this with you, you'll again have this in your back pocket for further conversations. But it it kind of follows that other chart that I just showed that with the um. You know, the for sale and the rental um, onsite. So there's, I have one chart for onsite and one chart for offsite. And so, again, for sale, um, projects that do units onsite, they're gonna be dispersed, cuz they're condos. They're gonna be constructed at the same time as the market, cuz they're in the market buildings. They're gonna have amenities shared through an HOA, and their design and finishes will be the same as the market. Rentals, on the other hand, we have the two models dispersed or aggregated. Um, the construction um, timing is required because it's onsite to be concurrent to the market, that can be challenging. Um, amenities are typically, they have to be shared, um, for either whether they're dispersed um, or aggregated. And then the design finishes are either gonna be equal to the market or separate project, um, which is one that we have to keep an eye on the de- on the quality and the design and the finishes. And then the land is a different animal, the land dedication is the other option. We've only ever done two in the program, um, since two thousand, so twenty three years. Um, but again, this might be something that we see more of in the future. This would be a piece of land that is within a project like Diagonal Plaza, it it is a piece of land. Um, on the site of of a project, um, and I'll talk in a minute about a piece of land that is elsewhere. It, that's um, used to satisfy IH. The result of that land that um, is dedicated to the city. We don't keep it, it's basically land banked, and our our la- the the. The the housing authority holds on to these pieces of land that we're gonna build uh, projects in the future. The city doesn't keep the land, we we turn it over to our designee, according to the code, and that will always be the housing authority. And then they're gonna do a project on it, it will be a hundred percent, just like any other funded project that you see like Rally Sport or some of these other ones. You're gonna see a project that is aggregated um, in a hundred percent affordable buildings. Uh, the concurrency is not required according to the code right now. Um, it's land banking, so the land is gonna be used to build affordable housing at some point in the future, so it does not have to be built. At the same time as the market project that um, gave us the land. Amenities are not shared, because it is essentially a separate project. And um, the di- design and finishes, um, we have confidence in, because it'll be the housing authority and they do um, very nice work. Um, and then I kind of left annexation in here, because annexation could be whatever's in that annexation agreement. Um, we have certain things that we negotiate for um, currently, but. Annexation agreements are negotiated, and then they can sit up on the shelf for years. And so they pop up and they've got all kinds of, you know, they can be an annexation agreement from twenty, twenty five years ago. And they can have all kinds of things in them, so there, eh, annexation's a little bit of a, of a, you know, loose cannon. So, um, now for offsite, um, same thing. If somebody says I'm, I've got a for sale project and I wanna give you units um, offsite somewhere else. Um, they can be dispersed or aggregated, dispersed means probably they're gonna buy a single family home and dedicate it to the program. Um, they could buy a condo, nobody's ever done that yet, but again, the future, who knows what the future holds. Um, or it could be aggregated into a whole nother project, Two Corners is a, is a project um, up in North Boulder that is all uh, for sale. And that was an offsite project provided fro- by um, Two Nine North, that big rental project, Two Nine North. Um, so that was a hundred percent affordable, it's lovely project, I think people are really happy, happy there, but and it's a for sale project. The construction, again, needs to be concurrent to the market, that's challenging. Um, actually, I I I um. That that's not correct, the construction can be within one year from when the market development um, gets at CEO. Uh, are the amenities, if they're, again, this is offsite, it's nowhere near the market project, probably. We don't um, typically put amenities into affordable projects, and so we don't ac- require them for offsite projects, we want housing. Um, and when, and, you know. Again, if you put in amenities, you have an HOA, you have HOA fees, i- it it's not necessarily a great thing for the. For the owners, they want nice housing, they don't want a bunch of HOA fees to to support a bunch of amenities, that's definitely what BHP has found, or what we found. Um, and then again, the design and finishes depend on what the 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 they're doing. Um, uh, the single family homes that we've gotten through inclusionary housing, we got the last one probably sixteen years ago, like. Single family homes are not very attractive anymore, because it's hard to find one that, um. You know, that works, that is, that that the cost makes it worthwhile to buy a single family home and indeed restrict it. Um, for rentals, if they do them offsite. Again, they're gonna be, they they propose a site for these projects. We do have a review process to determine whether the site's acceptable to the city. So there's a whole process around that, um, there's criteria for the site, was, you know, what kind of zoning does it have? Um, is it compatible with the adjacent community, et cetera? Um, but um, the site is proposed, that that again is gonna be a hundred percent rental project. Um, the this is the the concurrency for both of these, actually, one year from the market project. They do have to put up a financial guarantee to ensure that the project will um, come online and come online relatively soon. There are no amenities required for offsite projects, and it's, the design and finishes are something we have to keep an eye on. And then land, when it's provided on elsewhere, um, offsite, that would be Mount Cavalry. Gonna end up with a, um, cuz we've only ever done the two. Um, uh, an aggregated project, in other words, a hundred percent affordable project. The concurrent concurrency is not required with land, it's land banked and a project is is developed, um, when there, there are funds and. You know, capacity to develop it, so it lay it, what the land dedication option is really a land banking option. There are no amenities typically required in a funded project, and then the design and finishes are determined by BHP. So, um, so those are just two charts for you guys to have and to think about, um, as we move forward with the the update. And so let's move forward with the next slide. So now we're gonna talk about cash and loo. And how we do cash and loo. So, right now we have two categories uh, for cash and loo. Um, developments with five or more units and developments with four or fewer units, they're kind of separate tables. Larger developments with five or more units have a higher cash and loo. Um, just across the board than developments with four or fewer units. The reason that that division was done, um, and it was done back in. Two thousand nine, I think, uh, update to the, to the program. Was because there was a desire to um, sort of keep IH uh, more modest for single family homes and and these, uh, you know, four or fewer. Unit developments, that that was the desire of council at that time. Um, the cash and loo is divided into three types, single family, which is the highest amount of cash and loo. Um, townhomes and then uh, like a duplex to an apex is a middle amount of cash and loo, and then. Large attached, which is primarily large apartment buildings, has the smaller, smallest amount, but they're, they're actually not that much different from each other, but there is a slight difference in the cash and loo between these three products. Um, the cash and loo is determined based on the gap between a market and affordable prices. But it doesn't differentiate, this this gap analysis does not differentiate between for sale and rental units, that is not. What we're seeing in other programs, so best practices is something that our consultants are looking at, and we might wanna divide it out. Um, for calculation, that's uh, that separates out a for sale gap and a rental gap, and it can be done. Um, the amounts, um. Are based on the average floor area of all the units in a project, that's very typical. And it's applied on the sliding scale, um, for unit, if the average size of units is five hundred square feet. It'll be lower, it's a square foot, it it results, the whole, the whole methodology results in a square foot. Um, cash and loo amount. And so a five hundred square foot unit, you take that square foot amount and multiply it times five hundred. Twelve hundred, you would do the same, and everything in between, there's a a ta- a big table, you can pull it up on our our website, which we'll give you the link for. But it, it's capped at 1200 square feet. So if the average size of units in a development is say 2,000 square feet, the cash and lieu would be the same amount as if the average size of unit was 1200. This was again, built into the program when the program was adopted because there was a desire not to, not to, to require higher cash and lieu for bigger units. That probably has changed. We'll find out because it's certainly one of the options that we're going to talk to you guys in council about. But so one thought we have is that this 1200 square foot cap probably should be either eliminated or moved. Quite, you know, back when the program was adopted in 2000, units were an average of 1200 square feet. That's not the case anymore. Okay. So move on to the next slide. So again, what do we do with the money? People always want to know. They're combined with other funding sources. They're competitively distributed. That's what our TRG is for, to help us determine what the, the funding applications, who should get what amount of money? Funding requests exceed available funds pretty much across the board always. So there are fund rounds where people who want to build affordable housing come in and they, they petition the city to get funds to do their projects. And again, as we've sort of driven home, these local, our local dollars are leveraged with dollars outside of the city. The money is used for construction of new affordable housing preservation, which is the acquisition and rehabilitation of existing housing and land banking for future projects and other minor things, but those are the big three. The next slide, please. So I did want to talk about our policy around demos and rebuilds because it's something that we are probably going to propose a, an update for. Right now, the way the code is written, and this has been in again, since the code was adopted in 2000. If you demo four or fewer units, IH is waived for the new replacement homes. This primarily applies to single family homes. That's where we see it play out day in, day out. People are demoing single family homes that are modest and fairly affordable and rebuilding much larger, more expensive homes. However, a new home on an empty lot, should you be lucky enough to find one, not replacing a demoed home can't qualify for a waiver. So this isn't really equitable. A new home on an empty lot is going to be assessed for IH, but if you tear down a house and build a new home, you're not. So there's a, you know, that's not, not really equitable policy. And it's becoming more and more of an issue where smaller homes are replaced with much more, with much larger, more expensive homes. And so we're, right now staff is thinking that probably keeping it at, at this four. So if you, if you demo more than four units, let's say you demo 10 units, you don't qualify for a waiver. It's capped at four. So keeping that four. But if somebody demos four or fewer units and particularly a single family home that they, we would assess them for IH for the additional square feet over what they've demoed essentially. So the, this is, so let's see, let's move on to the next slide. So our IH webpage is very robust. There's a lot of good stuff on there. There's a handy unit and cash and new calculator for developers so they can put in the numbers for their project and it will tell them how much the cash and lieu is, how many affordable units are required and what affordability level they would, they would be priced or the rents would be set at. There's a link to the IH code and administrative regs. There is a cash and new worksheet. It's a PDF that you can print out. It's that scale that I, I was talking about that you guys might be interested in. There are two cash, two affordable price sheets, one for low mod and one for middle income. And then there's a, a rent table that for the rents that apply to IH, it's like the table I showed you and other different forms and things are on there. So we're, again, we've already started the IH update. We've hired a consultant Kaiser Marston and Associates, also known as KMA. They're looking at best practices for these types of, you know, updates like onsite middle income and how we determine cash and lieu. Then they're all going to, they will help us to, to test the feasibility of any options that we bring to you. So we make sure that they are actually feasible. And they're going to, they will have recommendations on updates based on their experience, which is what we hire them for. Next slide. So the council direction again was to explore strategies to increase middle income housing. This is our strategy right now is to primarily acquire middle income housing through increased funding. Not so much directly through IH because in order for IH to produce middle income housing, we need more for sale housing to be built in the city. IH is a function of what is being built. So to that end, we would like to look at the incentives and strengthen them or look at things that are maybe going to be more effective. We also want it again to increase funding. One of the strategies is to have cash and lieu for larger homes. And then have this cash and lieu requirement for, for single family homes that are demoed and replaced. Next slide. And of course, since we're coming in with a whole program for updates, we will be looking at some other more minor program updates that we think are important and that are responding to sort of current conditions. One is to modify those IH rents. Possibly adjusting our cash and lieu, not, not so much the amount. Sorry, am I missing something? But the methodology for how we determine cash and lieu and there are a bunch of other minor tweaks that, that the code needs to be kept up to date. So next slide, please. So I have a few different project schedule slides for you. This one talks about the project schedule and community engagement. It's pretty high level at this point. We're still working on our community engagement approach. We've already hired the consultant and started our initial, initial analysis. They will be working through May, giving us some interim sort of reports and feedback. And the final report though, they're not really expected to give us until June. So we will still though be moving forward on alternative development and testing while they're doing their work as well. Then we will go into our stakeholder feedback phase in May and June. And then into the code development phase after that. And one thing I do want to say about this is that, you know, I want to add a quick note about the community engagement approach. It's expected that increasing affordable housing opportunities will advance racial equity in the city. But we're also taking into account the intended and unintended impacts of housing policy on racial inequities in the country. And we've completed the racial equity instrument for the IH update and that's included in your memo. So that, that will just be ongoing, as it says at the bottom. Racial equity assessment is ongoing and we will develop, monitor and revise strategies to identify and address impacts on racial equity as the project moves forward and we are looking at options. So the next slide. So these are some of our initial. Somebody ask you a question or? Okay, sorry. I'm sorry, our, our, this is sort of our initial plan for levels of engagement. As you can see, January, we're kicking off with this 101 for planning board and the HAB and TRG. In the spring, the city is going to do sort of a world cafe kind of format to inform the public of housing priority work related to housing. There's a number of initiatives that the city is doing related to housing. So we will be included in that outreach. And that includes the occupancy work, the updates to inclusionary housing, the middle income down payment assistance, zoning for affordable housing. Things like Boulder Junction Phase Two, which will have a bunch of affordable housing. So there is a number of things that will be folded, folded into that. In June and July is when we will probably have some pretty mature options to put on the table. And we will be going to, of course, Boulder Housing Partners, who is our main partner in developing and creating affordable housing. The TRG, the Housing Advisory Board, Planning Board, and of course the public. And then in August is when we expect to get to, after we get feedback on the options from everybody in June and July, we will go to city council for the code updates. So first reading and then the public hearing. And then after that, in September and October, we have to update the regs before the code updates can go into effect because we need the regs in place to implement the code. Next slide. So again, this is sort of an overview of the approval schedule. Third quarter will be coming to planning board first. Then code updates to council and then fourth quarter, we will be updating the administrative regulations and the new code will go into effect. So that is the end of our presentation. We have questions. So I know I went fast. I didn't want to take up the whole meeting time with, with this because I know there are a lot of questions that people have. And you can always refer back to it to, to the presentation.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's, let's hear the questions. I see Philip has his hand up.
Well, I have more of a comment than a question, but I could rephrase it as a question. I, I have been thinking about ADUs lately and about occupancy lately. And I wonder if you've thought about ways to have, have some synergy with occupancy and ADUs like it, that, one of the things I've been thinking about is there's a lot of vacant rooms in Boulder, by my estimate, probably about 30,000. I'd love to have someone give me better data if they have it, but I could, I could give you my detailed analysis of, of the data I used. I think it'd be super cool to think about ways to use inclusionary housing policy to incentivize people to let out rooms at affordable rates or to incentivize building ADUs that would, would be permanently affordable. Maybe there'd be a possibility for small grants or small incentives to homeowners that would, that would take on an affordable renter. So anyways, I just, because, because all this stuff is swirling about occupancy and, and ADUs, it seems a little strange to, to just have this completely separate over here where, where we just focus on new housing and buying off existing housing. So I'll just do one comment at a time. So I won't be too long winded.
Okay. So Jay or?
I think that's a Jay question.
Any response, but we can move ahead if you.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure. I have a, a great response. I understand what you're saying, Philip, in terms of the internet connections. But I mean, the incentive for ADUs, for example, with IH is that it doesn't apply to an AD. It, it only applies to the principal dwelling. Same thing with occupancy. Occupancy isn't necessarily impacted by IH. But I get what you're saying. Is there a way to incentivize both of those things through IH? And I don't, we have to think about that and get back to you.
George. Yeah. Okay. Thanks. On the topic of the presentation, you had mentioned at the front of it, the idea of the middle income housing being 28 to 30% of someone's income. And I, I, what I'd like to understand is sort of the breakdown to understand what that means because there's lots of ways to slice that. Meaning, does it include the interest and principal on a mortgage? Is the mortgage assumed at a 30 year AM or a 15 year AM? Does it include the property taxes, include the insurance, does it include the utilities? Just, it would be helpful because there's so many, be helpful for clarity, I think for us and, and just to, just to understand what goes into that calculation. So you know, we can understand sort of the parameters of what that 28 to 30% really means.
Sure, I can, I can address that. So it's a reverse mortgage calculation. It is principal interest in taxes. It also has a multiplier in it for, for mortgage insurance. It is based on a 30 year mortgage with 5% down. And that is what most affordable buyers are, that's the product that they're probably going to get. We don't have our homeownership people here. Jamie, you might know that, but you know, the affordable units aren't necessarily, they don't, people don't get, use all the mortgage products to buy them. They, they're going to typically use a 30 year fixed mortgage. Because that just makes their payments affordable because that's how the calculation works partially. But that, that's the way it works. Does not include utilities. Rent, rent does include some utilities. It's sort of a utility. Credit, you know, it's not, it's not obviously the exact utilities that everybody has, but there's a utility credit figured in to the rents. So that we, so the rentals we do at 28% of income. And the for sale are at 30% of income.
Thank you. And that, that was, that was super helpful. I was just trying to, and, and, and just along that line, current Boulder AMI. I remember last time we had a presentation, it was somewhere around $103,000.
Yeah.
What is, is that still the case?
Yep. And I think that's a family of three. So it's actually divided out by number of people in the family. So the AMI is this range and I think 103 is, is, is the AMI for a family of three, meaning half of the families make more and half make less.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Sure.
Michael.
Thank you. Like my colleague Philip from HAB. I think I'm going to be more commenting than questioning, but just give you an idea of what the discussion has been like in our last several meetings. We've really been talking about zoning quite a bit. And if there's any utility toward affordable housing by some incremental intensive splitting of single family lots, for example. We had a presentation on that from a national expert in December, which is very interesting because it suggested, you know, really get a lot of affordability just from that simple rezoning for greater lighter density. And we see that in Boulder. There's a lot of town home development going on in Boulder now and it's a very high price point. So I appreciate Michelle's comment about the challenges with single family homes and some of that is because the homes are very large. But even in these more compact town home developments, we're seeing really high price points. So I think what we have been musing about and nowhere near make a recommendation, but it's just a conversation is can we be looking at some incremental zoning reforms combined with IH? So if a developer were to do, for example, for luxury townhomes, there is an affordable homeownership opportunity included with that. Some of these newer developments are more than five. They're, I don't, I don't know a number, but it seems like they're 15, 20. So it doesn't get at that issue of broad scale affordability, but it does provide more affordable housing potential with some more social mixing potential to slightly reverse the, the trend in public school registration, which is plunging so much. And my final comment is, you know, there are potentially a couple of large, larger tracts of land worth in that where you could get more bang for your buck with such an approach. Not to endorse this, but there's certainly been discussion about the airport recently. It's 138 acres, planning area reserved too, and even commercial areas that are underperforming to have large parking lots. So I, I see some potential there. It's a conversation we've been having at HAB and I'm hoping we can come up with some good recommendations. I want to commend the city housing staff for the really great job they've been doing in a difficult environment. And this presentation tonight was extremely informative. So thank you for that.
You know, Michael, I, I would say that we, we meet weekly with the planning staff working on the, the zoning incentives. So we're all definitely talking to each other on the same page because we have to make sure all these tools work together. That can be really tricky. They can do something that really, really interferes with IH and IH can do something that really interferes with some kind of zoning tool that they're looking at. So Some kind of zoning tool that they're looking at. So we're definitely coordinating on those efforts.
Yeah, and I wasn't suggesting that you weren't. We we had Carl Geiler come to our last meeting. Um some of this, some of the information he gave it was almost like a teaser in that regard. I thought, well, there's some good thought heading in the right direction. We'd love to hear more of that.
Mark.
So I want to second all the praise for the presentation. I've been. Waiting for years to kind of have something like this. Uh I've only been on a planning board for a year, but. But in in other uh circles to under help understand. Uh the breadth and depth of our inclusionary housing ordinance. So that that was really great. So I'm going to make a statement and then. Two, two questions. Um the statement is, I it seems like we can all agree that affordable housing is good. And more affordable housing is even better. And the que- the first question is. If I understood the slide correctly. Our current regs seem to incentivize. Fewer units and larger units at the at the. Lower end of those number of units. And I I I don't understand why we would do that. So can you? You know, give me your best guess as to why we have. Uh if I'm understanding it correctly, incentivize fewer units and larger units.
Mark, can you can you clarify for me why why you think that's the case? Like, what tool is is?
Okay, if if you. Go back to the slide that, well, for instance. We um don't, we cap. The inclusionary housing. Um fund requirements or requirements. At twelve or thirteen hundred feet, so. If I build a six thousand square foot. Uh, single family home, it's treated the same as a what I I forget what the number was, but a a smaller. Uh unit. And and we and we treat. S- a smaller number of units. In a gentler, easier fashion than a than the five or more units, so. Uh, you know, so what so it it's kind of like we're being deferential to larger. Units, larger, fewer units. Then a developer says, hey, I want to build twenty units. And small, compact and so forth, and and by using a unit designation. And then by having um the cap of the adjustment be in the low. Tens of hundreds. Um we're 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 giving people building three and four and five thousand square foot units. A bit of a free ride.
Right, so so. So those are two updates that we're addressing. Um historically, why why that was done? Um it's sort of. Interesting. I mean, I wasn't around. I was probably a teenager. Um maybe not a teenager, but I wasn't around when the program was adopted. Um there were concessions made from the city to the development community, so they wouldn't oppose the adoption of the program. One of them was, we will not penalize larger units. And that's how that twelve hundred, th- this is the the urban myth that was told to me. I I I can't confirm that it's true or not. But this is the explanation that I've always understood it to be. That, um you know, it was a it was a concession. There was a number of concessions made to get the program adopted originally. Um and um one of them was to not penalize larger units. Well, that's probably run its course and lived its course. And that, of course, back then, in the year two thousand, huge, huge homes, you know, the 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 home sizes were smaller. So it made more, you know, there was a little bit more logic to it. Um so one of the things we're definitely looking at at in the update, as I explained in the slides, is is actually removing that cap and saying. You know, that 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 isn't serving us anymore, and now we need to rethink that. Um the other one is that. Um and and I don't know that we're going to. So the other one is that there's a twenty percent requirement on one to four units, including single family homes. It's a lighter requirement. Um and that was a desire of the council, and I I was there. I did, I've done all the major updates, so I did the twenty, two thousand nine to two two thousand eighteen and nine. Um and the the discussion that council had at that time was. We we want to keep IH on a single family home, but we really want it to be a lower amount. We 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 want to make sure we're not, you know. Impacting the development of single family homes. So so there was, it was just a different time and a different desire for what they wanted for the outcome. So so we split up that table. We put a a smaller amount of cash and loo on the one to four units and. You know, that's that's what was adopted, and and there was a, there was a, you know, rationale behind it, but it's probably, again, served its purpose, and maybe we need to rethink it.
So can I just add on to that a little bit? So just to expand on Michelle, I mean, I I I know where you're going, Mark. I mean, I don't, but my opinion is, I don't think. Inclusionary housing is what's driving larger units and fewer of them. Um I think it's the zoning code. A developer doesn't show up at the, you know, they're they're not. That devious, they're not looking at the the cash and loo table to figure out, oh, I pay slightly less cash and loo. If I do larger, fewer, larger units. Um I would say it's our open space requirements. It's everything else that's driving that. IH is just icing on the cake, I would say, and and we are working to address that, but don't think that simply by changing IH, we're going to change um what developers build.
Right. Great. I that both of those answers are really helpful. Uh I will say, yes, i- is if it's icing on the cake, but you know, you add icing in the the middle layer and. So you know, you if if you, anyway, it can all add up to potentially a different result. Um the the next question is, and I think this is more pertinent to today, i- if I read. Uh this council correctly and community activists and so forth. We still hold out. On-site units as being. So far superior to uh offsite or cash and loo. That we not only have great incentives. Now for onsite units, we're talking about increasing those, which. If you if you do the math. Would actually result in fewer affordable units. And so the question is. Are are we, what is the? In in a city like Boulder, where we don't have. Large expanses of blighted areas or really areas that are highly undesirable, that someone could. Um do an offsite or cash and blue development. When we, if you take, just looking at Boulder and not Chicago or something like that. Uh why do we hold? Uh onsite units to such a level of superiority? That it results in substantially fewer. Uh affordable units being built.
Yeah, great question. I mean, I think you framed it well, Mark. I mean, it's it's a policy question. And I think in the past that there has been a strong community sentiment that. Cash and loo is bad. Um offsite is bad. Uh that true integration is what the program was intended intended for, and that was the case, but we were getting ownership at the time. Um with with the shift to rental. With everything else that we talked about in the presentation. I think it's a valid question for council and for um these body, for you guys, is what is the greater? Benefit, more units or onsite?
Okay.
Okay, all right, great. I think that that is an excellent topic for further discussion among the board as well. So I I hope that we can have a coherent discussion on those issues.
All right, great. Well, thanks. Thanks for indulging me and and answering as best you could.
Yeah, and and then I would add, Mark, that, you know, the program, because of the way it's legally um positioned, and it was adopted, the legal, uh you know. Um foundation of the program, there ha- there always has to be a unit alternative. We have to. We have to offer that to a developer. We have to say, you can provide units or you can provide money. We can't go to a pure. Scheme where it's just like, yeah, so. You know, we 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 want that to work as. As well as it can.
Right, well, i- in fact. If one could make the case that it works so well that we get three or four units. Uh in the market that are affordable for every one unit that would be located onsite. So if I I I just, I I I hope. That when that when this is presented to planning board and council, and we make our our recommendations and council votes on it. That it's really weighed as is an onsite unit. Four times the value. Of an offsite unit still located within the city. Because that, to me, that is what's uh what's being shown as we get three to four. Offsite, offsite uh units. Using cash and loo for every unit. That that would, if we adhere to the goal of integrated onsite units.
Anyway, it's a valid topic for discussion, I think. Let's move on. Laura.
Thank you. Um I want to also support the thanks to staff for a really informative and great presentation. I'm sure I will go back and watch it and refer to it. And pull up the slides. Um so much information. So thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Sloan, for an excellent presentation. I have so many questions. That's why I'm really glad we're having this discussion. I will limit myself to just a couple for now, like Philip did, and maybe we'll come back around. Uh just following up on what Mark is saying, I I think I'm hearing that. Uh you know, you showed a slide saying council gave you a goal, and that goal was to increase middle income opportunities. And part of the way that that has translated is into this inclusionary housing program, which does provide middle income uh uh affordable opportunities. Um but it's translated into middle income. On-site ownership, three components, and and it's not clear to me. From looking at the council meeting in November. Where Bob was questioning it, Nicole was questioning it, Matt Benjamin was questioning it. There was a lot of discussion about. Like, is this the right tool? Is this what we really want to focus on? Is this, should this be the focus of our efforts? And I know that we want to kind of narrow down in this conversation to just talking about the inclusionary housing program, because that's. Other things are on the table too, like occupancy, ADUs, zoning reforms. All of that will get talked about, but even in just this conversation around inclusionary housing. You know, I was really intrigued by something that Michelle mentions that. You know, in for um the inclusionary housing can be used to support priorities like transitional housing, permanently supportive housing, senior housing. And it's not clear to me that council. Considered all of that and said, no, the thing that we really need to focus our inclusionary housing program on is including. Is increasing opportunities for middle income, affordable onsite housing above everything else that we could be doing with this money. Like, I am all one hundred percent in favor. I think your ideas are fabulous for increasing the pie, right? Increasing the pot of money through. Increasing the inclusionary housing fees on tear downs and rebuilds that are much larger. Um and and that kind of thing. You had like a list of things that you're can changes that you're considering. I think these are wonderful ways to get more money into this program. My question is just about whether I hope that this body and HAB and council will have a robust conversation around. What really is the number one and number two priority for how we use that increased pot of funds, because. It's not a zero sum game exactly, but it really is. If if we're really going to focus our efforts on. Increasing middle income ownership opportunities. A lot of resources are going to go towards that above and beyond what some of our other priorities might be. So so that's kind of a comment, but. Uh the question, I guess, in that is. Am I missing something? Like, was there a conversation at city council where they said? We really need to focus on not just middle income and use this tool for it, but middle income ownership onsite opportunities. Can you point me to that?
But I can give you a little bit more context, maybe that might help. No, I think you're you're spot on with your sort of your perceptions and analysis. So. This has been the biggest nut to crack. And, you know, every jurisdiction across the country is struggling with this, I would argue. And it started back in twenty seventeen when city council adopted the middle income housing strategy. Um and what? The big outcome from community surveys and whatnot is that when people want who are renting in Boulder. Um wanted to make that transition to ownership. Felt that they had to leave Boulder to find something that was affordable. And so trying to retain sort of that. Um more of that middle. Um because the barbells were growing. We're doing really well with low and moderate income. The the wealthy were doing just fine with housing in Boulder. It was that middle that was getting squeezed out. Has all sorts of implications for our school district for. Um in the diversity of our socioeconomic diversity of our city. So I think that's where the fixation came from and the desire to try to address this problem. Um and staff, we've been trying to be responsive. So like, we talked about, we adopted those tools in twenty eighteen, created more incentives. Um I think part of what we want to go back to council with um is. These are still the huge challenges. That's why we. Hardly know that slide. We still have all these big challenges. We we haven't figured out exactly how to do it. And we're not entirely confident that we're going to, but by simply increasing the incentives that we're going to somehow magically get more ownership. Um doesn't mean we shouldn't still keep trying. Does that help at all?
That is helpful. Thank you. I think we're all struggling with it. Um it it clearly. How having people leave Boulder because they want to buy a house is not the ideal outcome. Um and and so that is that is helpful to see where that thinking has come from and why staff are trying to be responsive to that. I I still have questions about whether it would be our number one priority for how we. Spend the additional inclusionary housing money that we might be able to increase the pie by. I think we should still have a conversation about that, but it's really helpful to have that that piece of information. Thank you. I'll stop there and let others take a turn.
Okay, Sarah.
Uh, thank you. Um thanks, guys, for a great presentation. Um I I have uh three questions. I will just put them out there, and you can answer them at at your leisure. Um the first is, is there any discussion of increasing the annual percentage of appreciation that's allowed in the for for. Future for sale options? I have heard from a couple of people, not a lot, that the very um small appreciation that's allowed. Is a sort of a disincentive uh to um. Homeownership in these um in the few, but hopefully more. Um affordable IH for sale units. So that's question number one. Um my second question has to do with. Is there um a value in? An updated housing choice survey? Uh our last one was twenty fourteen. That was, I think, for in commuters in twenty fifteen was missing middle or. Maybe it's turned around the other way. But it's ten years, almost ten years later, and a lot has changed, and I'm just wondering if. As we think through. The incentives related to the specific slice of the inclusionary housing program. Whether having um updated housing choice information might be valuable. Um and then my third question in this, I think this is a secondary question to this particular conversation, is how would new um IH? Um regs apply to the East Boulder subcommunity plan, since that has a lot of. Units that could come online in the in the near-ish future. I'm just sort of curious what the implications. Or impacts might be. Those are my three questions. Answer them at your leisure.
Um, okay, I can do that. Um so the first one, the annual appreciation. So the um the reason be why we have uh limited the appreciation for permanently affordable homeownership homes um is so that. Because the idea is that home is supposed to be affordable in perpetuity, right? So future residents in fifty, a hundred years have to be able to afford that. So it's tied to income. That, and that's what um ensures that it remains affordable over time. So if we had a higher appreciation rate, we wouldn't be serving the same income levels as we um currently do.
Jay, would that be, would that be true, even if it was just a one percent increase in the? I'm just sort of, I I don't, I'm sure you guys have done the then run the numbers, but.
Yeah, I I mean, so one percent doesn't seem like much, but if you do one percent. Compounded every single year in fifty years, that that home is not going to be affordable to anybody. So but there are other options, so as Michelle talked about, you know, and I know exactly who you've been talking to, because. They're not happy. they're not happy being in the program. But it's really not intended to be a lifetime solution to everybody. So the average tenure for homes is is seven years. A lot of people take that opportunity to purchase the home, to build equity, to get that down payment, to be able to purchase in the market. That doesn't work for everybody. Um, but uh, and we do have people that stay longer as well. Um, but they still, you know, there are lots of folks that if you, we did a survey, the last last survey we did, nine out of ten people said they would purchase a home again in in the program. Um, and, you know, a similar percentage said that their financial stability had dramatically increased um as a result of purchasing their home. So there are lots of benefits. But the the appreciation rate, and we're going to talk about this as part of the down payment assistance pilot, um, March second with council. Yeah, uh, in the outside, one other thing I wanted to mention. So there are also allowances for capital improvements. So it's it's not limited to just the cap. You you can make improvements. So say you swap out your carpets, hardwood floors. Um, there are allowances for that, so that would increase your um your future sales price and your overall appreciation over time. Um, does that answer your question, Sarah, the first one? Okay. Um, sort of a news news survey, we uh have.
Jay, I'm sorry, just for clarification for around, um, you you mentioned trying to keep parity at wage growth. My understanding of nominal growth per year nationwide, and I don't know what it is for Boulder, is around five percent. So I guess that's my que- what you said, and and also we've hit CPI and inflation, all those things. So I I guess to Sarah's point, whether or not two percent is the right number, um, I I think it may be worthwhile just to understand that a little bit better. Um, because things are changing rapidly, both through inflationary things and CPI as well as wage growth. And so um, if we're trying to tie it to wage growth, um, I I don't know that two percent is tied to wage growth. So anyways, just just a, just a point um to of clarity.
Yep, no, I appreciate that. And yeah, and I was overly simplistic, so it's a combination of of area median income as well as the consumer price index. Um, so there there is a formula that we use. Um, it doesn't mean that can't be reviewed. My, I guess my only point was that it has served us well, but your point is well taken with, particularly with the significantly uh high interest rates uh for the last couple of years. I I think it is worthwhile. And we are just now building capacity in the homeownership team, but I think that is something that we could undertake in the next year or two. Um, and yeah, we we have heard from others, but I just wanted to give you the background of why we that that why we cap it and but how, what we cap it at is is certainly up for debate. Um, so in terms of doing a new housing choice survey, um, we we haven't budgeted for that um and don't have any immediate intentions. My guess is uh we would hear a lot of the same things that we hear now, um, or that we heard back in twenty sixteen. Um, and so not to say that we might not learn something new, but we're still trying to sort of implement uh the policies that we have, and we're we're still trying to climb out of that resource constrained environment. Surveys are really nice. Boulder's really good at studying issues and doing surveys. Um, so but um, at this point, we don't have any plans to do that. Uh, but that could change. And then the new regs for the East Boulder uh area, so basically, once they and Sloan can probably talk better than you guys know, so more about when did it would apply. So once those regular regs are effective, and Michelle said, fourth quarter of this year, um, that's when they, that's when new uh application comes in, that's what applies at that time. Does that help answer your question, Sarah?
Uh, yes, and I guess I'd ask Sloan what, I I'm I'm kind of asking you to do this on the fly, but would that mean twenty-five percent of the whatever is developed, whatever units are developed in East Boulder would be uh in the permanently affordable uh pot?
Yeah, so I know there's a lot of language in the area plan about sort of maximizing affordable housing, especially in certain areas. Um, but at this point in the planning process, it hasn't actually been uh codified in the land use code. I I know they're looking at possibly like creating a new zoning district. Um, so it's, that hasn't happened yet. So if something were to develop in the next year or two, the standard IH requirements would apply. But I think the vision is to sort of increase opportunities for affordable housing. So hypothetically, it would be higher than that. Twenty-five percent if it's onsite or, you know, the cash flow payment.
Okay, let's see, Angela.
Um, I wanted to make a comment um regarding the fourth quarter end of year for twenty twenty-two because the statistics look a little different than they were in twenty-one, even though twenty-one on a sales side was very robust because of COVID. So in the city of Boulder, um, at the end of this past year, um, twenty-four percent of the homes that sold were two million and above. And fifty-nine percent of the homes that sold were between one and two million. So that's eighty-three percent of our home sales exceeded a million dollars. So the pie is rapidly shrinking for folks who are just trying to stand, trying to buy into town at or under a million dollars. So I think revisions to the IH program are really welcomed and we really need them. So that was just comment number one. And then um, I had kind of a question for, I guess, Jay and and well, and Sloan and Michelle. When you're looking at formulating changes to the IH policy, I'm just curious. Does demographic data in terms of the generations at play, you know, the homeownership groups coming in now with, are the millennials? They're roughly twenty-eight to forty-two. They're in their home buying years. Does that play into how you look at? You know, what of opportunities you're trying to create and and what kind of product types you're trying to create? I'm just curious and just asking.
Uh, I can uh um attempt to to answer that. So Angela, the way IH um has been developed and put in place, and it's true of all the programs around the country, the the program produces a subset of whatever the market produces. And the market takes all that into account with their market studies.
Right.
And then they decide what product they think is going to be, you know, most well, first of all, what what is it they want to build and what what can they then sell or rent? So IH doesn't really draw, isn't really driven in that way. I if 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 their market studies compel them to build micro units, IH gets some micro units, right? So it's really uh uh the development community that decides what the product should be based on their market studies. That makes sense?
Yeah, totally. Okay, thanks. Um, and then.
Carden, does that, does that include BHP? When BHP develops its own product or thistle or Habitat for Humanity? Like, are they doing market studies or what are they relying on when they do their products?
They are definitely doing mo- market studies. Matter of fact, they're required by their banks, because they all have loans. Um, and so market studies are pretty much required, and you have to just show that there's an adequate mar- market for whatever. So BHP is different. They're doing a hybrid. They're trying to do, meet um what the market study says is a a desirable product in the community and meet city goals and build things that, you know, they they um confer with us um uh for what what we we're interpreting as uh city goals and what council wants and what the comp plan is looking for and that that type of thing. So so BHP is straddling in the middle. Um, as far as the product, you know, and that's more like they're trying to be meet city goals for who they serve, and the product is what their market study says the product should be. You know, I mean, so so they're a different animal. Um, they're they're definitely a different animal.
Thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting, Angela.
Oh, no, that's fine. And I just had one more comment, and I just know this because I sold property in town for a long time. When Markel and Coast to Coast, I think Markel brought the um annexation in um, out in uh Northfield Common, so that's Northeast Boulder. Uh, the folks know where Northfield Common Common is. So and Michelle, you can jump in here at any time. Thirty-six townhomes were built for the middle income, you know, ownership program. And I can't remember, there's three streets. URA is one of them, and then there's two other streets. And the product type was brilliant because people never move. Those units hardly ever come on the market. And some of those units or many of those units have original owners, and they're probably twenty years old now. So it it it's just an example of building a neighborhood and the right product, and the product was flexible to town home. Three, you know, two beds, two baths up, um, a basement that was able to be built out with another bathroom and a garage, and people love them. So.
Yeah, and so I would just clarify, Angela, that's a good, good observation. They're beautiful homes out there. And that was annexation. So when an annexation is negotiated, it's not IH. It it's staff trying to interpret um what we think council is looking for in annexation and looking for in a housing community benefit. Um, so it's a little bit different, um, because we have a lot of control in a, in an annexation. We don't have um, you know, like uh I I said with um with IH, it's a subset of whatever the market is producing. In an annexation, we can go in and say, you might want to do single family homes, but we want duplexes. Because we think, because that controls something for affordability. You know, for whatever reasons, we might say we want this other product type. We can do that in an annexation. We can't do it in IH. Uh, we can't say you're, oh, you're going to build apartments. Well, you know, now you're going to build some duplexes. We can't do that in I in in IH, but in annexation, we do, and we do it all the time. Um, and and actually, our current um sort of rules of thumb for negotiating exam annexation is the affordable will not be a single family home. Because we don't think council is looking for a bunch of uh um, single family homes at this point through annexations. They want to get more housing and more affordable housing. So um, often we will say, whatever you build in an annexation um has to be a some kind of attached product.
See, I'm trying to give everyone a chance here before repeating. Lisa.
Yeah, um, I think this got touched on, and I apologize. I was having some internet connectivity issues. Um. I don't want to jump the gun, so I'll just say um that I'm very curious to hear what, a little bit perhaps, about what might be going to council in terms of down payment assistance program? Because when I think about missing metal, I think about preserving um you know, existing middle income housing as opposed to building new, because that's a lot more affordable. And then I also think about how do we subsidize people to actually be able to purchase homes who who might be more than affording the mortgage payment already, depending on what they're paying in rent. Um, but who cannot scrape together, you know, that much for down payment. Um. So yeah, it may have been touched on while I was um having some issues. So I just want to acknowledge that we may have already touched on that, but I would appreciate a a quick um recap of that or covering of that if we didn't get to get into it too much.
Yeah, I hope you too. Thanks, Lisa. So um, yeah, and I didn't really cover all the different tools that we have for um, it'll only requiring middle income. So um, there's the pilot that's coming up, March second, council will discuss it in more detail. And we'll go into the 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 different tools that we have currently in more detail, just for context for council at that meeting. But primarily, we have a down payment assistance program currently. It's called homeownership H two O. Um, where we provide up to a hundred thousand dollar down payment for um, we we do not require deed restriction. Um, but we um, when when they go to sell, uh, they basically have to provide us a share of the appreciation. So it's an evergreen fund, so we get that money back and we can loan it out to a new household. That's been relatively successful. We've probably had a, you know, a couple dozen people participate. Uh, the other is we started purchasing units on the open market. Um, buying them down, basically, sometimes we have to do a little bit of rehab. Um, and then reselling them uh to middle income homeowners, homeowners. And that subsidy is anywhere between, you know, a hundred thousand dollars and um closer to two hundred thousand dollars. Those we do deed restrict because we buy them down. Um, and that home remains affordable in perpetuity. Um, so those are two different tools. And then the pilot that's going to be discussed by council is kind of a an interesting hybrid of the two, where we're going to provide a down payment assistance. The homeowner is going to pay that back, um, but in exchange, they're also going to accept a deed restriction. Um, so it's a, it's definitely a different animal. It's a little more complex. Um, and so that's what we need to check in with council on, what are the right parameters and appreciation is one of those big questions. What is the appropriate appreciation rate? So, yeah, so there are other tools out there, and that's part of this whole discussion. Um, but again, it's not IH is one of those many tools, and that's sort of our approach for affordable housing. How many different tools can we have in the toolbox?
And let me ask just one other um thought question. How is that program communicated or advertised? Like, how do people learn that they could take advantage of it? I mean, I I know that if I go and I like Google down payment assistance folder, right, that it'll come up. But how how else do people learn that that's even something they could take advantage of?
Yeah, we we've been working on that a lot. Um, actually, this, just the past few months, we changed some of the parameters. So the H two O program, the shared appreciation, um, if you made it to page seventeen on your annual letter from the city, from the city, it it was there. It was a full page ad, um, trying to entice people. So, and and we have gotten one person since then. So it it worked. We got one. But it 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 is kind of challenging, and we, so we've tried to work with local realtors. But if anyone has suggestions on how to get that word out, we have a nice handy flyer. Um, we do, you know, we we've done social media. You might have seen it. Probably not, but um, it's competing with a lot of other things that that are out there.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I'll jump in with a question here, too. I think we've made a full round now. Um, I was wondering if you could uh embroider a little bit on the, on the pro, on the land banking program that I think Michelle mentioned as one of the options for that that developers have available to them, just to provide some sort of equivalent value of land that then either is automatically goes to older housing partners or could be retained by the city for other purposes, too, I suppose, if they decided to. Can you describe a little bit more how that works and how?
Yeah, um, so the land does need to be used to produce affordable housing. It can't be used further because it's part of the IH code. And it says the land to be de- to be dedicated um for the production of affordable housing that conforms to the IH kind of code parameters. So essentially, the way it works, and we've only ever had two. So we don't have a lot of experience, um, but they, we uh basically, they propose a piece of land. We have some criteria for the land. It's got to be a clean title. It's got to be free of environmental, uh, you know, contamination, that kind of thing. So there are some parameters in the code of what the land can look like. It's up to the city manager to decide whether the land is acceptable or not. It gets appraised. And then that value is, um, we take a look at that value as compared to the cash and loo that the project would owe. If the land is not equal to the cash and loo amount, they pay the difference. If it exceeds, we'll still take your land, the land. We won't give you anything back. Um, it's never going to be exactly right. So typically, you're going to see a piece of land being donated. That's going to be less than the cash and loo amount required, and then they'll make up the difference in cash and loo. And then it's land is banked. Again, the city does not hold on to it. We dedicate it to BHP, and that's, again, that's part of the land dedication, um, part of the code. So it's dedicated to our, um, uh, you know, a a developer of our choice, but the the market developer does not get to decide who who the land goes to. That's up to the city. But they dedicate it to us, and we've just been dedicate it right on to BHP. And then um, they will develop it when they have the capacity. It will probably, so there are some things about that land dedication that we're going to propose some um updates to the code. Because right now, there's a little bit of a disconnect because we probably would have to put money into that project. The the delta of that cash flow will probably not be enough to to develop a project on that land. So we need to sort of look at that and decide what that should really look like. And um yeah, so then eventually be BHP holds it. They're holding a number of parcels of land right now um for future development and and sort of feeding them into the development queue as um they have capacity or it makes sense. They're develop a project on it. So.
So does it have to be a piece of land that? So does it have to be a piece of land that BHP is actually eventually interested in developing, or could they just own it and, and flip it, uh, you know, uh, and use the funds for, for some other purpose that they want to do?
I, I don't think it would be in the, um, the, um, in, you know, the, the code is written that it, it needs to be developed according to, um, you know, in conformance with IH. So no, I don't think that it would be okay to just flip that land, but that's something, the whole land piece needs to be tightened up a little bit. And again, we've only ever done two. Mount Calvary was land dedication from Fraser Meadows. And then we have Diagonal Plaza that is doing a land dedication. So we've learned a lot from those two land dedications and have ideas on, but there's, it's not a policy change at all, it's just sort of some tightening up of that land dedication code language. Well, no, they, they can't take it and flip it. Matter of fact, they sign, so when, when the land is dedicated, it, it, we don't even, it doesn't even pass through us. It goes directly from the developer to BHP. But we have, but then we execute a land dedication agreement with BHP, because we're not just giving them land, right? Um, there's an agreement and it says you must use this land for X, Y, and Z.
Right.
Yes.
BHP have the opportunity then to reject a piece of land that they think is unsuitable for development?
Yeah, I think they could, yeah.
So it's BHP's decision, it's
No, well, I mean, we would definitely talk, you know, so again, we've had two in twenty, twenty-three years. Um, but in, in both cases, you know, we talked to BHP. Is, is, is it, you know, is it a piece of land that is, you know, that is attractive and that you can do a project on? And again, it was Mount Cavalry, which is going to be a beautiful project, a senior housing project. And then Diagonal, um, Plaza. So that'll be rental. So yeah, we definitely, we, we confer with them and we probably, the city would reject the land if BHP said, you, listen, um, housing and human services is not a good piece of land.
Okay, so, yeah.
They're kind of, they, they would kind of advise us on that, yeah, for sure.
Okay, Michael.
Excuse me, I'll see to one of the Dan's because I've already, it's commented, although I would like to comment again after they're done.
Oh, alright. Laura?
Oh, I think, uh, Dan Rotner was i- in line before me.
Oh, go ahead, uh, Dana, I, I didn't stand up there.
Okay, tha- thank you, everybody. I, um, just, uh, those of you who don't know me, I, I have been a member of the TRG since, uh, uh, I think it's twenty thirteen when I first started. Uh, so it's been a little bit. I think I'm wrapping up my tenure on that, um, on the, on the group, but a couple of comments here, because I, I just, first of all, I want to say it's, it, the staff uh, at Housing Division, I mean, the challenges of assessing these funding applications, they're extraordinarily complex. They're often, uh, delivered under tremendous time pressure. And, uh, and I, I found just what my takeaway over the time on the board is that and, and this also ties to some of the commentary, I think Laura made commentary earlier on, how the funding that goes into the, into the pot, um, uh, for the cash and loo, how it's allocated. E- assessing the relative merits of these different applications is extraordinarily difficult because they tend to be very diverse. I mean, you have, you'll have, uh, a Habitat for Humanity project next to, uh, permanently supportive housing, next to rehab funding and understanding just in terms of the scoring of these different applications relative to overall policy objectives of the city of Boulder, I think that's very difficult. And, and I think staff is, does an admirable job at sorting through all this information and providing recommendations. They do, I mean, I think they provide great information, but as I said, to, to say, alright, we're trying to promote middle-income housing, making sure that the cash and loo funding is allocated according to those overall policy objectives. I think you really need to try and have some sort of a scoring system uh, to allow that, uh, more objective assessment of the relative merits, um, of the different applications. Um, you've got some very, I think, very worthy, um, nonprofits and uh, working in Boulder and their ability to present these applications is, uh, you know, they're organized to do this, it's what they do. They've, uh, applied for grant funding, um. And, and sometimes it's, I think, going to be a matter, I mean, one of the challenges for staff and for policy standpoint. How do you say no to a really worthy and needy, uh, nonprofit who's dealing with one issue when the targets of the overall policy, uh, shaped by, by the city council are going in a different direction? So that's just, uh, my brief comment and I just had one quick follow-up question from very early on in this, uh, in this discussion. The, on the ADUs, there are incentives for a permanently affordable ADU. And I'm curious how, what the uptake has been in terms of, uh, how many ADUs have been delivered under that incentive program? Is that something that's worked or, uh, you know, the desire to get more ADUs, maybe that's, uh, that could be potentially low-hanging fruit to change the shape of that program in a way that would increase the appeal? Because I, I think a lot of the, I don't think people give up a lot in terms of rent necessarily when they create an ADU that meets the, uh, the AMI guidelines. Um, but I think there's some complications in the, uh, in the program that make it less desirable than it might otherwise be. Anyway, that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Thanks Dan, great question. Um, so council just last Thursday, uh, had a study session on it, and the latest ADU updates. So, uh, and so if you really want to know more, they did a great job of explaining how the program works. But just very quickly, so, um, the affordable ADUs are not, uh, permanently affordable, they're not deed restricted. Uh, what a homeowner does is they sign a declaration of use, agreeing that they will not, um, rent uh, the for, the unit for more than, um, eighty percent AMI. So they basically agree to charging, um, a certain rent level. Um, so they do that in exchange typically for not, uh, having to provide onsite parking space for the ADU, uh, to get a slightly larger size. And that, so it's basically built in as, uh, uh, we wanted to provide more flexibility for the construction of an ADU, but in exchange, we wanted to make sure those rents are affordable in the long term. Um, I would say it's been fairly successful. I don't have the exact number, but I was surprised, um, I want to say it's close to half or, I can't remember which way. Uh, are, uh, the new units have been built since the regulations have been adopted, uh, are considered affordable. Um, but keep in mind, doesn't mean that they have to rent it. So it just means that they have to agree that if they do rent it, that'll be at that affordable rate. So I think council will be interested in continuing that, um, as well. Um, but yeah, so that's a little bit more of it. If you want more, the last Thursday's study session is a great resource.
See, Michael?
Um, thank you, uh, I don't have questions because again, the staff did such a great job, they answered all of my questions during their presentation. So more comments, I'm afraid. Um, this gets back to what Mark McIntyre was talking about a little bit in two respects, uh. You know, I think you could summarize a lot of this conversation by saying, uh, we're getting a lot of housing that we don't necessarily want and not enough of what we don't want. Um, and I, and I'm really encouraged to see, um, discussion of, uh, the, the very large home issue, because it has an effect on neighborhood character as well as affordability. Um, so, uh, again, um, if there are zoning amendments that could be considered that would allow some lots to be split in a way that also incorporated IH, I think that's, uh, worth, uh, further discussion. I'm also really appreciated Angela bringing up, um, Northfield Commons and, uh, demonstrating the benefits of, uh, looking at larger parcels of C-controlled land and if we can be creative, and maybe we can find more of those in the future to create more, uh, middle-income housing. Um, so I don't think the onsite affordable and the offsite cash and loo housing are mutually exclusive, that, you know, we should be pursuing, um, all, all the tools we have to create diversity in housing types in various locations. Um, so those are my comments.
Thank you. Laura?
Thanks John. I- is it okay to be more on the comment end of things rather than the question end, or do you want me to save comments for later?
I, I would prefer to save our comments for later, so let's focus on the questions now and then we get another round with comments. Maybe after break.
Okay, I will lower my hand then, thank you.
Sarah?
I also have comments, so I'll lower my hand till later.
Okay, man. Okay, let's take a five-minute break and come back with being ready to share your wisdom here. So we'll start again at eight twenty-seven.
There was a slide that talked about how much it costs the city to produce middle income housing by various methods, like how much injection of city cash you have to do to do a to buy a unit and then resell it at a lower price, or there were like three different options with different price points for the city. I don't know if you're able to find that for when we start backup. I could try to find it too.
I'm pulling up the presentation, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
You know where it is, Lo? If you don't, let me know.
Well, I've got the deck, so I can imagine it's in there.
Jay, do you know which slide I'm talking about? Sloan, do you know which slide I'm talking about?
Yep, I know exactly which one.
Okay, that's very impressive that you can bring that up so quickly. That's nice.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out, are we all back here? I think we are. No?
Do we have Lisa? Yeah, Lisa. Well, Lisa isn't in her picture yet.
Daniel ML are still not showing their faces, so if they're here, please let us know.
All right, we'll give them another minute and then we get going again. Okay, here's here's at least somebody. Okay. Okay. Right, so Laura, your hand was up first, but are do you want to wait for that slide to appear before you talk or?
I can wait. Sarah, do you want to go first?
No, Sarah, go ahead.
All right, thanks. So a couple of comments. I I I'm a little concerned that there's a slight misunderstanding of what it is that's what city council has asked staff to do. They haven't asked staff to rejigger the entire IH program, so it's about minute middle income housing. They're asking them to revat review and revise the slice of the IH program. That's for for sale. Affordable middle income housing. I I just feel like there's been a slight piece of just a little bit of I don't want it's not misinformation, it's just in in and it's inaccurate description of what it is that I think staff is working on. So and to that point, I really like Daniel Rottner's suggestion of some very clear criteria, he used the term scoring system that would give the folks who are on the technical advisory board some some very clear common criteria that will allow them to effectively balance all of these competing projects. And maybe so I think if staff can think about something that will a lot give them that a tool that will help them so that they can find the right balance of very low income rentals, low to moderate rentals, and this slice that is for sale. That I think would be a very valuable addition to the toolkit for the city. And I personally think that this is a very important slice of the what we're talking about tonight is a very important slice of the IH program. We've talked for many years now about the sort of dumbbell effect of we have housing at the low end, and we have housing at the high end, and we don't have a ton in the middle, and this is one of those efforts to get more of that. So I really appreciate that we are having this conversation and that council has has focused on this. Those were my comments.
Okay. Laura, you ready?
Yes, thank you. And I have a few, and I might forget some, so hopefully I'll cover what I want to. So I apologize if I've misunderstood the focus of what this update is. My understanding was that staff is looking at the inclusionary housing program for its third update, and that a major focus of this update is trying to increase the production of for sale, middle income housing, as opposed to anything else that you could be focusing on with this update. So if I have misunderstood that, I apologize, but I do understand that you're not going to take the whole pie and shift it. It's just it is looking at that slice and how you can increase it is that's what I thought I understood from the staff memo. So I like Sarah, I do agree with the suggestion for clear scoring criteria for the TRG to help with how to understand when they have all of these different competing needs in front of them, like transitional housing, supportive housing, halfway housing, senior housing, low income housing, middle income housing kinds of projects, how they would weigh those against each other for the available funding. And that's for that funding piece, although I think staff are also looking at some developer incentives for what's required when we do a site review project, for example. I I do want to caution, so I did read the memo about the use of the racial equity instrument. And it looks like the racial equity instrument kind of slightly maybe punted on the question of whether increasing the share of funding that goes to middle income housing might have a disproportionate racial in impact as compared to taking that funding and using it for low income, low to moderate income housing. You know, I I don't have the demographic figures in front of me and income by by racial breakdown, but my basic understanding is that racial nothing minorities tend to be disproportionately represented the lower that you go in the income slices or tranches. And so I do have some concern that if we are shifting resources or taking our expanded pie of resources and dedicating it towards middle income housing. I I think we need to acknowledge that 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 is perhaps not the most the best way to use those funds to boost up racial equity in Boulder. Middle income home buyers are probably disproportionately white. So that's not to say we shouldn't do it. That's not to say it's not an important goal, but if we're going to be honest with ourselves and how we are using our funding and what is the racial impact, we should talk about that. So I I I don't want to sort of glide over that and just say, well, any increase in affordable housing is a is a good thing for racial equity. Because I guarantee you not everybody's looking at it that way. Mostly with these comments, I want to think about or talk about some of the things I have heard that staff could be considering in this update, specifically about inclusionary housing that I think are really good ideas, and I haven't yet heard them a signal boost for these particular ideas. And so I want to signal boost. One is one thing that Lauren Fulkert's mentioned at the city council meeting back in October was the idea of not just when you scrape and rebuild a house larger, but if you're just adding a big addition onto your house, if you're taking a single family home and making it larger, perhaps significantly larger, that is not currently subject to inclusionary housing fees, as I understand it, and it perhaps could be. So I think that's something that she suggested taking a look at, and I think is worth taking a look at. Erin talked about another of Lauren's ideas that one thing that the city could do to encourage onsite inclusionary housing is that if a small project is meeting the inclusionary housing onsite, that it could be done by rights and not have to come through site review, which I think is another idea worth taking a look at, like, how do we give people a break on the site review process if they are meeting what we really want in our goals for inclusionary housing? So that's another idea I wanted to boost. And then something else somewhat related to this discussion, hopefully related, you know, Nicole brought up that Nicole Spear in the city council meeting brought up that one of the reasons why people want homeownership opportunities is because that is one of the major equity building tools. It's generational wealth building. It's in addition to the stability and the freedom to be creative with your own home and what that that means in terms of your embeddedness in a community and your pride in your community. But one major reason why people want homeownership is to build wealth. And I don't know if the city has considered or looked at. You know, are there things that we can do for people that are in our inclusionary housing, our affordable rental programs to help them build wealth? And there have been some experiments around building equity for renters and financial literacy for renters in affordable housing programs in places like St. Louis and Cincinnati. I could forward some articles. I don't know how successful those have been. I don't know how widespread those things are used. I think it's worth taking a look at because I do think that the ship has kind of sailed on market rates, affordable, middle income housing, the market is just not going to produce, like we were talking about, middle income housing. It's not going to produce single family homes or even duplexes or townhomes for the most part that are less than a million dollars, right? So how can we as a city help people who are renters to to build their financial literacy and build equity and build wealth? And I think there are tools to do that that we could maybe explore, and it could maybe someday become part of the inclusionary housing, what we do with our money from inclusionary housing. And this is where I wanted to pull up that slide, Jay and Sloan, I don't I don't know if you have that slide from the presentation to city council that talks about how much are we injecting into these various products? Right? Thank you. I think this is just so instructive, right? So for new rental construction, it looks like, tell me if I've got this wrong. It costs the city eighty thousand to one hundred and ten thousand dollars per unit as a subsidy to get that done, basically. Ownership acquisition, a hundred thousand to one hundred ten thousand, and new ownership construction, five hundred thousand to six hundred thousand dollars. Am I reading that right, Jay and Sloan? Is there more you want to say about this? Like?
No, I mean, you you read it correctly, that there is a huge discrepancy between. That's why Mark started off saying, you know, how many additional rental units we could get for each new ownership. So we tried to make that super clear for council. And I think it is part of the the conversation, and it has to be part of the the policy discussion.
Thank you. And so so this is what I'm focusing on right now is like that half a million dollars for each unit of new ownership construction that the city has to inject, and I'm guessing we don't get back. This isn't like shared equity, and we're going to get it back when the house is sold. This is like a one time infusion. We'll never see it again. How many people could be helped with some kind of equity building program for renters that we wouldn't have to do a five hundred million dollar dose per family, right? But we could help more people build wealth in more ways.
Could you? I'm sorry, could you clarify ownership acquisition? I'm not I'm not clear on what that means exactly.
Sure. So that's the example I gave of the how the city the past couple of years started going out and buying basically condos on the market. And doing a little bit of rehab and then reselling them, buying down the price and reselling them to an eligible buyer in the affordable housing program. That estimate's actually a little low. It's it's really a hundred thousand up to closer to a hundred and eighty thousand. Depends on the number of bedrooms. So we've been trying to purchase more two bedroom and three bedrooms, and of course, those are at the upper end of that range. Does that help?
It it does. Would be would be interesting to to Laura's point. So when you talk about the ownership acquisition being, let's say, a hundred to a hundred and eighty thousand and being two to three bedroom, what would the new rental construction, would that also be two to three bedroom, or would that be closer to zero to two bedroom?
Michelle, do you remember? I think it's the same in terms of, you know, the range, depending on the size of the construction, but.
Oh, you think you think the eighty to one hundred and ten thousand for rental units is two to three bedroom, and you think the ownership acquisition is also two to three bedroom?
Well, it it's it's a bit challenging to compare the ownership versus the rental because the this is city subsidy, right? So new rental construction, that's typically what we've helped BHP with a subsidy, so we're filling their gap. They're getting all sorts of other financing through, you know, LITAC, state and federal, other state grants. So it's kind of like comparing apples and oranges. Unfortunately, but it's just for comparison what the subsidy is from this expected from the city.
Got it. But but it might not be an apples to apples. It might be an apples and oranges.
Understood. Thanks.
Okay, Laura, go ahead. You were.
Yeah, I I think I made my point, which is that, you know, I I really appreciate the the data and analysis and everything that staff are bringing forward, and I think it will help have planning board the city as we go forward and look at our options, think about how do we want to use this pot of money? Because I agree that I'm sure there is a subset of folks who are leaving the city in order to buy housing in other markets because that middle income slice is just it is a very, like Jay said, a very, very difficult nut to crack. And it looks very expensive for the city per family to help these families. And is that our priority? I think it's a conversation we need to take a good, honest look at and have that conversation. Even though I really appreciate the work that staff has done to to say, hey, the city set a goal, they set this middle income homeownership goal. What are some of the ways that we can reach it? And now I think that conversation is maturing to the point where we can say, okay, now that we know what it takes to reach it, is that still our priority?
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I have my main comment is one, I think, I hope piggybacks on what Laura's been talking about, but I actually want to push back on one assumption that she was making, and that is there's a famous quote that a friend of mine likes to likes to pull out that markets are a good servant, a poor master, and a worse religion. And Laura, you you were saying that markets are never gonna you know, produce middle income housing and I I that that to me, that's a kind of that's a kind of like a poor master paradigm where I mean, if if you want to do thought exercises about how markets could produce middle income housing, you could you could say, well, what if we had allowed eight plexes on any quarter acre lot? The markets would 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 eagerly and and excitedly provide all kinds of products and that that would allow it, you know, and and a lot of different price points, but we don't allow that. We just sort of out of hand say, well, we don't want that kind of density. We favor single family homes and we favor large lots. And so all that to say, like, there are ways to think about markets and housing markets that would allow us to have the wind in our sails. An interesting chapter that I read a couple of years ago is 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 in the book Radical Markets, where it's a completely wild thought exercise, but it it does it does open up possibilities for ways that you can, you know, because we're this whole conversation is kind of constrained by the market as as we know it now, when in fact, we we've badly distorted the market in so many ways by the way we financed, you know, basically socialized home mortgage financing, you know, and so it I I don't know if that's a productive debate to have or not. It's maybe requires more regional and and national kind of planning. What did I want to say, though? The thing I wanted to say is a related. Yeah, it it's related to, I think, what Laura said about prioritizing homeownership. I I just I just want to also challenge the whole notion that homeownership is better than renting. That 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 appeals to me. I I would prefer to be a homeowner than to be a renter. I'm currently a renter right now. I've always kind of thought of myself as a future homeowner, and so I I don't affiliate this strongly with renters as I as I ought to, because I've been a renter for a really long time, and I'll probably continue being a renter. And so like how to just come out and identify as a renter and and get on board with renters' rights. And I I know Mark Fearer, who commented earlier, has has, we've had some good conversations about that. But I I just want to point out that in other countries, I'm thinking of of Europe. Homeownership is not such a central value. Lots of people rent. There's ways of thinking about community pride and oh, you know, community ownership in in the context of rentals. And I think that if we, you know, as a country, we didn't finance, you know, make make it so that like the only way to have stable renting housing is to subsidize mortgages and so that you get the fixed payment and then you pay it off and you're done. You know, homeowners are just subsidized in a way that renters aren't that allows for stabilized payments and costs, so. And there's a lot more to say about that. I I just if if the issue is like a discrepancy between whether it's better to rent or to own, we could we could actually just like ask those questions about, well, how can we make life more stable or improve civic engagement with renters? So. I'll I'll quit.
Okay, Sarah.
Okay, well. That I I'd like I would like to request that when we come back to this conversation in planning board, that that page from the presentation to city council that Laura called up actually reflect all the other subsidies that go into building all those other types of housing units, because then we're actually going to be able to see what the subsidies are, and it'll help us to think through the question of the cash in lieu, the I mean, cash in lieu is going to stick around. It's not going anywhere, but it would be helpful also for our discussion about is cash in lieu worth it? Because those subsidies will be reflected in the total cost of building subsidized attached units or apartments, rental apartments. And I think that the document that one pager is not an it's I I don't know whether it's an accurate or not accurate. It is not a complete set of data. And if we're going to use it, let's have a complete set of data about the various subsidies that lead to certain types of housing unit outcomes. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
George.
Thank you. As a as a father of two girls and an uncle of of many nieces and nephews who live in Boulder, we sort of experienced firsthand in our school systems, etc., that, you know, the the middle classes is is evaporating here. And so I I I appreciate what staff has brought forward and the idea that there is there is an appropriate place for a slice of our IH program to focus on more middle class ownership. I I I think of the of the teachers that my kids have had at foothills, only one owns their home in the neighborhood. And she bought it thirty years ago. I I I went, I attended the 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 eight week fireman, citizens fireman academy here. And at the time, which was a few years back, there were a hundred and two firemen. And of the hundred and two firemen on staff, a hundred and one lived outside of the city. Only one lived in the city. And so for a lot of people, and I appreciate Philip's comments around some of the some of the the thought, the the bigger thoughts, right, that, you know, the structural thoughts that maybe maybe, you know, in in a in a in a different reality or a different, you know, if we were having, you know, if we were if we were in a different country, perhaps people wouldn't feel the need of pride of ownership and stability. Uh, and 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 to 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 have ownership be a component of our I H program. But I I I think, you know, a little bit more grounded in the reality of our of of the context of where we're at and where we're headed, that these programs that we're talking about are 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 really important. Um, and I I think it doesn't negate all the other components of the I H program. Um, and so I, I, you know, I I think it's a worthwhile presentation. I appreciate staff's um, focus on that, um, and also the focus on all the other H I H components, but I don't want to, I don't want to lose this entirely. Um, the the discussion around this particular item versus, you know, other things that we can be doing simultaneously. So, thank you.
Lisa.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna agree with pretty much everything Georgie just said. I'm from Boulder. I was born here. I went to high school here. I graduated from Fairview. My friends are gone. They tried to buy here. They could not. They bought in Erie. They bought on Louisville. I know people who bought in Westminster originally because it's all they could afford, and then were two teachers. One of them who, one of them works for B V S D has been commuting in from Westminster because they could not buy here. They barely made it over the line into Superior because they were rapidly paying down a fifteen year mortgage to try to build enough equity to try to get somewhere close to back in. Like, I think the barbell analogy is the best example. It's great, and I do not want us to rob Peter to pay Paul. I'm very, very proud of our affordable housing. I'm proud of our rental program. I'm proud of what we offer to folks, and I think we're gonna keep having incredibly expensive housing. I'm not worried about that. Um, you know, it's a very desirable place to live, but not only are we losing the middle class and losing people who've been here who want to be here. Again, I I have friends wanting to buy in Boulder. I will always be in Boulder, but they they swore that up and down, bought in Lafayette. Could not find something to buy in Boulder. Their girls go to school in Lafayette. That's why we're looking at elementary schools closing here while we're looking at opening new ones of East Boulder County. Some of this is due to the age of our housing stock, the type of our housing stock, all of that, the fact that we've got a lot of people aging in place. I won't go off about Golden West Manor, losing the last Medicaid. You know, place that anyone could go Boulder, it's gone. But we we need to be looking at how do we retain community because not only are we losing those families and losing again, when I worked for the city, every year you could see fewer and fewer and fewer people who could actually live in the city. Everyone was in commuting. And then we yell about how we don't like in commuters. And I'm like, well, what are they supposed to do? Do you want firefighters or not? Snow drivers sleeping on couches and people's houses, snowplow drivers so that they could actually make their shift in the morning. Would have loved to live in Boulder, could not afford it, you know, so. I, again, I I'm not saying that I don't want us to also continue to invest, and I think we are in lower middle income, but we need to figure out. And I think we had some great comments too about, you know, what about duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes? That's not what we're talking about right now, but I think there are things that we can do around that. I'm really interested in the presentation you guys had about, it makes total sense to me that lot division doesn't necessarily equal, you know, more middle income. But I I just want to so strongly push back on the idea that we don't need to be focused on middle income. We have to, like, we we are losing Boulder as a community. We are losing families. And it's nice that there's all these older folks who are still going to be around. Sorry, anyone will do to me. Who's going to take care of you? Who's going to drive in and how much are we going to have to pay them to come in? You know, so I I just, I I think it's completely appropriate that we're looking at middle income. I don't think there's an easy fix. But this is the piece we've been missing, and that's why we called the missing middle, and and I just really want to push back on not continuing to focus on that and you know, I I think this is exactly what we should be doing. This is the, the thing that's, I don't want to say save Boulder, but it's, you know, it's changed a lot in ways that I think aren't just demographically trending, you know, it's 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 where we're getting these two extremes and that's all that's left. Um, and it's going to keep going that way if we don't make changes.
Thanks, um. I really appreciate Lisa's impassioned comments about uh, who, who will who will be um, our employees, our employers? Who will uh, take care of our elderly? It's 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 such pertinent questions in my personal life at the moment. I also want to say, as as our conversation, you have uh, I I don't, I I forget the exact number of people that are participating in tonight's meeting, but it's a bunch and we're all uh, impassioned about housing and uh, and our conversation has broadened beyond Boulder's inclusionary housing program. I think that points to that no matter how well we do with our inclusionary housing program and push and stretch it. Unless we make some bigger moves, we will continue to to lose ground. And and so the point I want to make is our governor has um, focused recently on broad housing policies and without a lot of specifics. So I can't say I support him one hundred percent. But I support his efforts to focus on housing, and I hope Boulder uses uh, Carl Castillo and the and the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs to shape rather than um, fight or um, try to retain some of our privilege and control of our single family zoning and neighborhoods. I hope that um, that the governor's efforts give us some courage, as as Councilor Yates pointed out in the A D U regulations that we didn't have the courage to go as far as we should have in twenty eighteen, and now it seems like this council does. And I think um, it's going to take some courage to, rather than fight uh, a statewide effort to increase housing opportunities to help shape it and broaden it and make it work for Boulder. So I hope that we uh, our planning staff and our housing staff continue to try to make make uh, work with our statewide effort to increase housing opportunities.
Thank you, M L.
Thank you, John. I've been I've been kind of overwhelmed. Thank you, staff, for the amazing presentation. Lots and lots and lots of of really valuable information, and I really appreciate um, the changes that you're looking at at making to uh, some of the um, I guess, potential in the I H program. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna fly the little A D U banner just because I think that one of the trends that we have seen with, well, a couple of things around eighty, so some of the eighty use are coming in even smaller than the I H basics on that little chart with the minimum size for this, that and the other. I don't know how they would continue to qualify for affordable ADUs if they're not meeting those criteria, but just, just a point. But the um, thing we have seen with ADUs is that they're trending toward not being rented. You know, people will um, deal you to affordable. And they do that because they're know they're not going to rent them. They're going to use them. They're either going to move into them themselves, the original owners, or they're going to have their children or keep them you know, to use for family visiting. However, so the, I think the piece here that comes and goes kind of very stealth like on the table is what about selling ADUs? And I'm not talking, I I know Boulder County says we don't want a parcel. We don't want to break parcels up, land lease. Sell ADUs, they would definitely sell below what any single family house would sell for in the city. Um, there are hundreds of lots that could, and people, homeowners would be able to afford to build the A D U to then sell it because they would get the money from the sale. These are regular people that own many of the single family houses where the original houses, where the potential for ADUs exist. One of the hurdles is how to finance them. It it's three hundred, three hundred grand to build an A D U, starting. Um, so to open up the potential for still keep the requirements, owner's got to live on the property and all that, but to be able to sell it. And I think that that would bring all of Lisa's friends get an opportunity to buy houses in Boulder. You know, our children get to buy houses in Boulder. People who wouldn't um, afford the new developer driven housing haven't have a, an opportunity that was taken off the table when our A D U policy was written. Because it says you can't sell it. And I would suggest that maybe that gets revisited in light of um, they would solve a lot of the problems for people who don't who could, but don't build an A D U because of financing. If it's going to be a for sale unit, you don't have that hurdle. Um, you get to provide housing on your property and um, people get to come and live in amenity rich neighborhoods. That would never get to live in the amenity rich neighborhoods. So I I'm just going to put that out there. I know, well, I appreciate what I H is is considering to do around you know, smaller houses and maybe disincentivize people to to build the giant houses and remove a small house from a neighborhood, that sort of thing. But I think that this potential to create a housing market for sale would start to capture that middle income that is so sorely um, missing out and getting to live in the city of Boulder. So I I I know that it's out of the scope of what we're talking about tonight uh, directly, but I I think the overall conversation of how, where are, where is that um, potential? To uh, not count on the developer because you know, the profit margins tend to tend to mess up the um, desire for people to just, okay, let's just make this housing meet these buyer guides, buyer targets. This is a whole different market. Uh, selling out the uh, ADUs. So that's, that's my kind of input. I I I'm a big fan of, you know, let's try to get housing, affordable housing into everything we build. Um, so I don't think the A D U creating the affordable option as a rental is working out really well. I don't think we're getting what we want. I don't think we're moving the needle. I think if we, if we uh, and maybe it's a pilot. Um, have a for sale option. I think we could start to see a housing product come into the market that um, I don't see how else it it, nobody's going to build small houses in amenity rich neighborhoods on single family lots. For sale, it's just not going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll throw in my two bits worth. I don't see any other hands up right now. I I would say that it's a
I've had my hand up for a while.
Oh, really? Who's?
Yeah, like, uh, Dan. Kind of, most of the evening, so I I don't know if it didn't pop up or something.
Well, go ahead, Ben.
I I guess, I I just a a few short things. Um, first thing I'd say, I do appreciate M L those points on eighty use. I think um, at the last HAB meeting, we did talk about the whole notion of how um, zoning policies fit into all this and um, according with that um, comp plan policies. And I do think that probably that's somewhere where where this conversation can carry a lot. There's a lot of pragmatic concerns regarding being able to sell ADUs, but I think the notion of how you could develop property or redevelop properties so that you have smaller lots that include affordable units. I know Michael was uh, uh, talking to that a little bit before. I think that's really relevant, and I think that's something that we um, all collectively should, you know, keep that conversation going on. Um, I I I also just wanted to uh, just state how much I appreciated Lisa's comments on um, middle income, and I I think it's it's absolutely important. And I think the other fact of it too, and from a community perspective, is the fact that there are so many different programs that are available on a state and national level, you know, LITC, um, section eight, whatever it may be, for the different um, the different income levels. But middle income is something that you really need to take a look at as a community, because there's not a lot of programs that are out there on the state or federal level that can help us swish those concerns. So that's just another point that I wanted to make, and I think speaking for what we've been working on, focusing on HAB for the um, past year plus, uh, you know, we we had a lot of discussion on that. And I think we all recognize, you know, the extreme importance of uh, the missing middle for for the city of Boulder right now. And um, I absolutely support those comments, and I've heard a lot of stories like that of people who actually grew up here. Now they can't live here, even though they grew up here and want to stay in the community and serve the community that they grew up in, especially if they want to serve the community in ways that might not be as fiscally rewarding as other as other endeavors, right? Your plow driver, fireman, teacher, whatever it may be. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to state regarding um, the whole thing with the uh, appreciation cap on uh, ownership housing, I'd point to Summit County, Eagle County, Picking County, and I think a few other jurisdictions where they actually had to, and I'm sorry if you can't hear me, I'm uh, uh, my voice is pretty shot, but where they've actually had to lower that appreciation cap because they had it too high at first, and what they found was over time, things were becoming less and less affordable for the market they were trying to serve, which is local employees. And, you know, I think Jay mentioned the fact that there is a formula, as long as we have a formula where we can keep revising that um, from point to point to make sure that we stay um, on top of that and that one thing's not outpacing the other. You know, I think the appreciation cap is absolutely important to maintain the housing that we're establishing and to do so in a manner where we uh, you know, can can uh, really keep the progress that we're making as we build on our inventory. So I just wanted to bring that point up too, because I think that's something that, you know, there's a lot of good examples where um, it hasn't worked as well as we would have hoped at a higher appreciation cap in other communities. And so that's something I just flagged for uh, pragmatic reality of it, is that if the appreciation cap is too high, um, then the the next generation is missing out on those. And, you know, like Jay said, uh, we're talking about housing that, you know, the whole notion, if the average is about seven years, the whole notion is it's a great way for somebody to get their start and to get footing within the community. If they want to stay where they are, awesome, but if they want to move on, it gives them that opportunity to move on. Maybe not, you know, flatly financial, but the tax benefits that they get from a mortgage. Like Philip said, whether or not that's good policy, and Philip, I kind of agree with you on that, but it is what it is right now. So there's tax benefits. And there's a lot of other, you know, benefits, both actual and intrinsic involved in that, that I think are really important. So um, you know, I just think it's it's really good to make sure that we don't um, go too far just looking at it from the fiscal gain, because then we lose sight of the other big important policies that are behind that appreciation cap. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. All right, well, uh, I'll try and uh, get my two bits worth then. I I can hardly believe how many people I agree with here. It's it's very unusual for me. But uh, I'd like to make two, two particular points that uh, I think are are very relevant. First of all, I I sympathize also, there's four Gerstle kids grown, who've grown up here. Our kids and my brother's kids, and none of them are in Boulder, even though they they'd like to be. And so, so my family has has experienced similar similar situation to others who've mentioned it here. I I think that Philip made a very important and significant point in his comments with respect to how we accept the market as dominating our decision making process here. Um, I think that we have the ability to have much greater influence on the real estate market than than has been discussed tonight. Uh, there's a variety of tax policies and other policies that the city could adopt to discourage large houses, to encourage uh, more folks in bedrooms. And I think that we have been notably lax on addressing those potential. Uh policies that would result both in perhaps diminished real estate values. And increased ability for people with middle incomes to to live here. The other main point is that I think uh we we need better information. As as Daniel pointed out, we need a a clearer decision manner in which to make decisions, in which to. Compare apples to oranges in the options that we're dealing with. I I think that the what we've been presented with tonight is excellent, and it's opened our eyes a bit. But I don't think that we are really making going through a pop. A proper decision making process unless we can have these clear trade offs in front of us that we know. What what we're trading off. And for example, I just point out what what Mark was talking about earlier. The the pros and cons of cash and lieu versus building on site. It it may be, and he may be entirely right, the cash and lieu produces more housing. But does it result in the town that we ultimately want to live in? For many, many uh objectives to our programs. In addition, just to providing housing, we want it to be attractive housing. We want it to to attract the people. That we are seeking to attract. So I I think there's a variety of trade offs that need to be made more clear in developing these decisions. But beyond that, I I would like to thank staff for this excellent presentation tonight. Because we have learned a lot and it will make our thinking better in the future. So thank you. And open it up to any other, there may be other comments that people want to make.
I just want to say they use staff too. This is great and really helpful and much appreciated. And it was great to have this collective meeting as well.
I think so too. Okay, Laura.
Um I I think my last comment is just gonna be, I I think both the conversation in in this forum and also back at city council. You know, we're having a really hard time separating out all of the policy tools at our uh. Potential disposal to deal with middle income housing and increase the stock of middle income housing and make it. More possible for people like the Gerstle kids and Lisa's friends and the kids in George's neighborhood to to own a house in Boulder or to stay in Boulder. In some fashion, we have a lot of policy tools that could help us do that. And the one that we've really been asked to focus on tonight is inclusionary housing, or at least that's how I've interpreted our charge tonight. So I just want to make sure that my comments about um how we focus that particular pot of money and the um. The kinds of incentives that we offer through inclusionary housing. I'm not sure that inclusionary housing, in my opinion, is the right tool to focus on middle income. I'm fine with the current slice that's dedicated to that. My concerns are just around with the limited amount of opportunities and funding that we have in that particular program. Is expanding middle income the priority? I definitely agree that we need more and better tools to enable middle income in Boulder. Um the the kinds of things that were mentioned tonight, ML's discussion of um of uh potentially selling ADUs separately. The concept of changing our zoning to allow something besides uh single family homes, very large, single family homes. Uh what John said about disincentivizing single family homes and and using our code to incentivize production of some smaller units. There's been discussion of cooperatives and how that can be a tool that encourages uh and allows middle income folks to stay in Boulder. Like I think we have lots and lots of tools for that, and and I think this is a challenge for city council, it's a challenge for us, it's it's a challenge for staff of. You know, each of these pieces are interdependent. And right now we're focusing on just this one, and so how do we adjust just this one without the broader context of, well, if we don't do it here. Where are we gonna do it? Because we do need to do it. We absolutely, like Sarah said, this is a challenge that's important. We absolutely shouldn't fall off the table. We absolutely have to face it. For me, the question is just how much of it. Needs to come down to what we do in inclusionary housing, and is this the focus for that pot of money? So I don't I don't want my comments to be misinterpreted, because I tend to get very wonky and very focused. Um so I just wanted to provide that broader context and and also second the comments that I'm so glad we're having this joint conversation. I'm so grateful to staff for teeing all of this up and and helping us wade through and make sense of this very, very complex landscape. And I look forward to continuing the conversation.
Okay. Any more comments? All right. Well.
So can I just say, thank you, John? So.
Go ahead.
Um yeah, so thank you, everybody, for staying this late and for all your contributions. It's extremely helpful. Um and I'm glad that you found this helpful as well. Um and Laura actually. Covered most of what I was gonna say, that there are lots of other tools there. There's lots of different avenues to address um middle income. And they're coming before you and council in the coming months, zoning for affordable housing, the planning reserve occupancy, all these other tools. In the toolbox are getting examined, and I just wanted to reiterate that that staff is coordinating on all those efforts. And trying to figure out how they're all intertwined to make sure that we're not um pulling a lever here and having unintended consequences elsewhere. And John just finally, I fully agree, this was just laying the stage. We will definitely have more information for you. Um as decision makers uh in terms of what are the policy trade offs? What does that mean? Um and provide as much data as we possibly can. So with that, thank you so much, everybody, for your time. Any questions, let us know. Um if you need anything, reach out.
Thank you. We'll be in touch. Thanks very much. All right.
We still have a matters component.
Yes, yes, the meeting isn't over.
So.
Go ahead.
Bye to everyone except planning board folks, yeah.
Yeah. And thank you, HAB, for joining us. Okay, so now we can move to matters from from staff first. Brad, you're on.
Yes, good evening, uh planning board members, and uh it sounds like you appreciated the uh. Information we learned about tonight as as much as I did and um. And our staff does too, so uh glad to get the thumbs up on that and and appreciate the the discussion around that. Um it's important that we do have kind of good cross awareness about these major. Uh land issues that that uh go across different departments. I have no uh real comments for this evening, other than to thank you for making time for a special. Additional meeting tonight, and I'm also happy to answer any questions that might be. In in your minds at this point, I will note, if you hadn't been tracking it already, that council has two major work program items. Up for final consideration on Thursday, that's the updated uh use table and the site plan criteria, so. Uh that has been, as you all have been very involved with and know uh long time in the coming, so uh we'll look forward to those. Uh hopefully being finalized on Thursday.
Okay, Lisa, you have some thoughts there?
Uh yeah, um something I'd love to hear on, but I don't know if it needs to be like a. Matters item or information, I don't know if it could just be. Not even a white paper, but maybe just like forwarding us information that already exists. Um. I'm curious about kind of ongoing metrics around some of the missing middle stuff, so I'm curious about like. I know that BVSD convened um. Uh I don't know, a citizen group or board or something to um look at school closures, you know, the same thing that we're looking at opening more in Erie. And I think last year, maybe um I'd be curious to hear that. I don't know that it needs to be again, like a ten minute PowerPoint or anything, but. If BVSD has something on that, I'd be really curious to hear it. Um and then also I would love updated figures which may already exist. On just how many city employees have to commute in, you know, and if if we could break that down, um. I don't know, I don't want to be too specific, where people feel like their personal information's being reviewed, but like around, you know, certain departments or pay brands or. Areas of responsibility, um those are things I just would be curious to look at. Um but again, I'm not sure it needs to be something we spend a whole lot of time on. I'd just like to have a little more transparency on it. Um to think it's good to think about.
Sure. Yeah, if if I'm hearing you correctly, um. Lisa, you're asking if we have this information, then could we pass it on? Um so that any existing metrics um that we have on middle income. And then uh employee commuting.
Yeah, and then anything that BVSD has, I imagine BVSD is playing their cards pretty close to the vest, so they don't. Get a bunch of people screaming at them, which I totally appreciate. It's coming, but they're trying to delay. Um but I mean, anything. They have it, they're ready to share it. It would just be interesting to kind of. See what's going on. But you know, you can go in and like see the numbers, which I've done, but. I I'm just curious to see where they're where they're at.
Okay, yeah, we'll see what we can get.
Certainly.
Yeah, uh first, just a response to Lisa. I know back in twenty nineteen, BVSD put out a survey on the number of. Families with children that were moving into the um. Uh Transit Village, and it was extremely low. I guess, and um so I think I'm I'm assuming they must be keeping. I I shouldn't assume anything, but so there's that data, and maybe there's some updated data as well. Um and then also, a couple of years ago, um um Lions discovered that. Um people who had built ADUs were illegally subdividing their lots. So um. So that's something to just bear in mind, um vis a vis ML's suggestion of. Selling. Second homes on single family lots. Um I don't know what um. I don't know how Lions responded to that. Um I just know that it happened a couple of times and it became an issue for the city council. Um now, the thing I actually wanted to ask, which has nothing to do with any of this conversation tonight. Um is uh can we, how far in advance can we get clarification on when the fourth? Third Tuesday of the week of the month is actually going to be used for a hearing. You know, um I am trying to schedule other things on the open evenings and. Um a little concern that um. Uh let me ask it this way, can we ask for like two months in advance, knowing that this the. Fourth Thursday, Tuesday, if I still think we meet on Thursdays, the fourth Tuesday of the month. Is going to either will be a hearing or not a hearing, so that um. Uh we have that versus there may be a hearing.
Yeah, I I'm happy to talk uh. You know, with staff on that and some of the history on that, I I will speculate a little bit, uh Sarah, that. That by the very fact that it's optional is essentially a safety valve for when. Too many items are stacking up on to a particular agenda. And some of that we probably really don't know until the month prior, because there's that kind of ebb and flow of whether. An applicant actually got something in when we thought they would and and some things like that. We tried to map that out. Fairly far in advance. Amanda and Devon, you you all send the calendar in in advance. Do do either of you have any kind of insights into that? And 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 again, we can have a conversation with Charles and others. But just offhand.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh you're you're totally correct there. So the fourth Tuesday meeting is really just a placeholder for overflow items if need be. Um there's not really anything scheduled as to as of right now for up until at least May for any of the fourth Tuesdays. But again, that could change depending on if there are overflow items.
I I just wanted to clarify, Sarah, were you you were using the word hearing? And and was that synonymous with meeting, or did you mean meeting at which there was a hearing?
Synonym.
Okay.
An event of some sort on that day, yeah. Uh so yeah, we'll go back and talk through that. Uh you know, ultimately, it could be a. Uh I I suppose more uh prospective decision when when you do the agenda scheduling, the the two that are. Which I think has been you and John historically, if I remember. I I don't know, I don't attend those, so I.
Yeah. Yeah, that's that's true.
So you know, that would be an option to just be. You know, more specific in saying, no, we're not gonna do it, pushing it out a couple of months. Of course, we always push up against the. Tension of applicants saying, hey, we want this.
What is the what is the. Criteria for staff to determine what public. Issue, what issues get put on the public agenda, on the public meeting agenda, like. Because I you guys are the ones who know what the timing, the timeline of things are. So.
Do you mean public hearing, like where there's a public hearing with the.
There must be, there must be some criteria that you have for, maybe it's, you know, a thirty day window that is required by law. For something, 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 like I'm just trying to understand, like is the.
Or or it's going to council and this is our kind of last chance to push.
Devon and Amanda can keep me honest, but I'm fairly sure it's here like other places, which is. We're not obliged to get things on a calendar by a certain date, but when an applicant is. Done and ready and they've checked all their boxes, we get immense pressure to get it on the earliest uh hearing we can. And um you know, at that point, they still have to go through the noticing, and so even as soon as possible. Can be a good thirty or more days out, because we have to do the legal posting in the newspaper, wherever we do it, and those types of things, so.
Well, I I do recognize that we all signed up for the po- potential of three meetings a month.
Yeah.
But I do think it would, if if there if the things that are time sensitive or what are going to council, then I think we should prioritize what's going to council. And things that are like concept plans and site reviews that can be a little more flexible. I understand you're getting pressure from applicants. And I'm just gonna push back and give some pressure from us. Um and uh just so, because we do all have work, travel and lives and all that kind of stuff, and it is. It's it's very challenging to uh not know. Um and to then have to scramble, you know, I I personally trap, I I'm already scheduling made work travel. And I'm sure Laura is also, you know, we all have work travel, so it would just, I'm just. I'm going to offer some counter pressure to the applicant's pressure.
Yeah, no, I I hear you, and you know, it's somebody who's. Among other things, responsible for the health and well being of staff, I'm keenly desiring to have them go to less night meetings than. Than necessary anyway, so uh I'm, you know, very much aligned with that goal as well. So yes, we'll we'll find in any possibilities we can to do that. Which is something I've been kind of pushing, so.
Okay, let's see, ML, was your hand up or not anymore? Okay. All right, matters, we don't have an attorney here tonight, matters from the board. Everyone just wants to go home and, oh, Laura.
Um can I just ask a question of Brad, if you're still here, um if you happen to know, um I'm. Very, as I'm sure we all are, I'm sad that John is uh your tenure is is coming up uh in April. But I am excited about the thought of a new planning board member, as we probably all are, and wondering who applied. Do we know when the applications for city boards and commissions will be made public? So that we can read them and uh ponder our next colleague. John, I don't know, did you reapply, John? Are you, did you apply to to stay on?
This is my second time on, I I think that was enough, probably.
Okay, that's one question answered.
Well, I appreciate your kind comments.
Yeah, I I do not know that. Devon, do you happen to know that?
I don't. Um I do know that we're gonna be get be getting um interviews with specific candidates starting later next month. Um other than that, I don't know at this time, like the actual names of specific applicants or any of their background information.
Okay, I think the applications from having recently gone through this process, they are publicized on the city website, they are published so that we can read them. So when those are available, I'll I'll be looking for them, but if anybody happens to notice that they're up, I'm I'm eager to read them.
I can check on that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Let us all know, we're all interested. Okay. All right, anything else? Well, thank you for an interesting meeting tonight, and uh see you next week.
Thank you all.
I.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you. Thank you.